Good evening. At this time, I'm going to call our July 11th, 2024 meeting of the Ballin County Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. At this time, if you will, if you'll stand with me, I'll have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Father, we're thankful to you for this day. We're thankful for, especially for this county we live in and for the opportunity we have to be here tonight. We pray your blessings on this meeting. We're thankful for all that make this meeting possible. We're thankful for our elected officials, our first responders, so many that make this a great place to live. And Father, we do ask that you just be with us as we conduct this business tonight. May we do it in a way that honors you and show respect to each other, and we pray all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll call roll Brandon Bias, Robert Davis.
Here.
Jason Paget, Michael Mullik.
Here.
Greg Seibert.
Here.
Jamie Stradiger.
Here.
Mike McKenzie.
Here.
Glenn Seal, Diane Burnett.
Here.
Michael Fletcher.
Here.
Danny Bolton.
Here.
George Waters.
Here.
Reed Key.
Here.
All right, we have a definite quorum tonight. At this time, you all received a copy of the minutes from our June 6th work session and our June 6th regular meeting. So you have those minutes. If there are no corrections, I'll entertain a motion that they both be approved.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Is that Mr. Davis? All right, Mr. Davis made a motion approved. Mr. Bolton seconded the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. All right. Mr. Dixon, you need to say some words before we begin.
So good evening. We have several public hearings for everyone tonight. Just a few of our guidelines for our public hearing process. Public comments should only be made during the public hearing portion of the meeting. State when you, when you come up to speak, state your name and address in the microphone for the record. Comments should be directed directly towards the chairman, and he can defer them to whoever needs to answer. Comments should be focused on the app, the, only the application being presented at that time, and comments are limited to three minutes per individual. If there's someone here speaking for a larger group, just state that, and if you're speaking for a larger group, you can be extended to five minutes. On the rezoning cases that we have, you'll see this in a lot of our presentations tonight. Our rezoning cases are evaluated by these 10 or 11 criteria. They're out of our zoning ordinance. One, is it compatible with the current development pattern? Two, does it change, has any conditions changed since originally zoned? Three, does it conform to the master plan? Four, does it conflict with any public improvements? Five, does it have any adverse impacts on traffic? And that's really about the overall traffic system for zoning cases, not, not any localized issues. Number six would be, is it consistent with the development pattern of the area? Number seven, is it logical expansion of the adjacent zoning? Number eight, timing, is the timing appropriate for the, given the development trends? Number nine, does it impact any environmental or historic areas? And then number 10, does it have any adverse impacts on health, safety, and wellness? So when the staff is going through their presentations tonight, you'll see them hit on all those points, but those are the 10 criteria. And of course, we have the 11 catch-all if there's any out, you know, kind of anomaly that we need to consider for the rezoning. But you'll see that in all the, all the presentations today, but those are, those are what has to be considered for rezoning cases. And then the subdivision cases, obviously, is looking at, does it meet the regulations or does it not? So with that, that's all I have to open it up. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before we get started with our cases, I've had several that we will not address tonight, so let me go ahead and tell you what those are. In case you came for those cases, I'm letting you know now that we will not be talking about these. So the first one is the Double Eagle Estates, which is located on County Road 97 on the north side of Hagendorfer Road in Lillian area. That one was withdrawn. So if you're here for that one, we will not be hearing that case. The other one is the Point Clear Village 3. That was a rezoning case located over on scene, Highway 98 and County Road 32 South of Fairhope. They asked that one be withheld, and they did it prior to the time period, but we will not bring it up tonight. The second one is Binkston Property. They also asked that it be held over. The Binkston property is one, it's another rezoning that was on County Road 54 west of Highway 59 in Robertsdale area. So those three items, we will not bring up tonight. So if you're here for those, you, you're welcome to stay if you like, but you don't have to. With that, we are now going back to something we started a while back. This takes just a moment to kind of set it up, but it helps move through the agenda much quicker. We have what is called a consent agenda. We now have, since one was withdrawn, we have, if I counted right, 10 items that are on this consent agenda. I'm going to call them out. I'll stop after I call it out. If you're here tonight and you had a question, you, there was something, you came because you were opposed, or you had a question about it. Please just raise your hand, and I'll pull it from the consent agenda. Because if I don't pull it from the consent agenda, when we go through all the 10 and they're still on there, we're going to make one motion for all 10, and we're going to move on. But if you have a question about any one of these items, I will pull it off the consent agenda, and we'll be sure and get, allow you to come up and ask a question on it. So with that, let me call them out. It'll take a moment to go through these 10, but let's be sure that everybody knows what they are, and you be sure and let me know if you want to speak to it. The first one is P E R 24-25, which is the Two Lakes RV Park subdivision. It's an extension. Anybody here on that one that has a question?
Mr. Chairman, there is no public hearing on the permit extension.
All right, so I can skip these first four? Correct? Because the first four are all extensions, if I remember right. Right? Then we'll go to the number CSP 24-01, which is office space. This is a, a commission site plan approval for an office over on Highway 59 and Dawson Road in Locksley. Is there anybody here on that one that wanted to speak or ask a question on? All right, the next one is Coastal Church. This is a commission site plan approval for a building to be added to their site. That's located on County Road 64. Anybody got a question on that one? Okay, we'll pull it off then. All right, the next one is G Paul's Farm. This is a commission site plan approval for a dog grooming and boarding facility on County Road 87. You got a question on that one? All right. The next one is Cricket Subdivision. This is an eight-lot subdivision located on County Road 13. Anyone here on that one? All right, that's going to remain. The next one is Three Omigos Subdivision. This is a three-lot subdivision on Highway 181 at the corner of Highway 181 and County Road 44. Any questions on that one? You do have one on that one? All right, the next one is the Coleman Family Division. This is a variance request. Anybody here on that one? You got a question on it? Oh, okay, if you're the applicant and you're fine with it, I'm not going to pull it because we're going to be recommending it be approved. So if, if you're fine with the approval of it, don't, you don't have to say anything. This is for those that may have something opposed. So anybody here opposed to that one? Or got a question on it? All right, so that one stays. All right, with that, let's take the, let's take the four extensions. So let me read them off. They're not public hearings, so for case number P E R 24-25, Two Lakes RV Park subdivision extension, that's number one. The P E R 24-26, Flamingo RV Park, also known as Plantation RV Park, another one-year extension. The third one is the P E R 24-29, Malbus Park Place Apartments, a one-year extension. And the fourth one is P E R 24-30, South Bend Village, and that is a one-year extension. So with that, planning commission, I would entertain a motion that those four be approved.
I'll make a motion. We approve the extension.
Mr. Davis made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Mr. Seibert, second the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those four approved. Now, I'm going to open the public hearing on the following items, and then I'm going to close it since we just found out these had no objections to them. So CSP 24-01, office space. Case number SC 24 dash, no, excuse me. Yeah, case number SC 24-27, Cricket subdivision. And case number SV 24-10, Coleman Family Division. If I didn't miss any, those are those that are remaining on the consent. So I open the public hearing. I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion for those items.
I make a motion. We accept them.
All right, Mr. Bolton made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Stradiger, second the motion. Do I have any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are, those are approved. All right, now we'll go back. And I'll open the public hearing for case number CSP 24-19, which is the Coastal Church. This is a commission site plan approval. Does anybody need to clear any prior communication on this item? Ms. Rhodes, you want to make a, well, do it as, you, as much as you need to do for us. I think we pretty much went over it. We'll call up those that had a question and see if they, we need to answer that.
Okay. This is case ESP 24-19, Coastal Church. It's a house of worship located in Planning District 15, surrounded by agricultural and residential uses, as well as the adjacent zoning. I will skip through these photos. Their request is to add a lobby as well as a classroom to their site. So here's the site plan, and then the building elevations, and the floor plan. And staff is recommending approval of this request.
Okay, I don't think, unless someone on staff, uh, planning commission has a question for staff since our work session. If not, I'm going to go straight to those that, all right. I, I have some signed up, but most were in support, but I had one neutral. Glenda Turner, if you'll come up to the podium here and give us your question or your comments.
Oh, thank you. Oh, hi. Did that work?
It's good.
I'm sorry. Anyway, I had two questions, and perhaps with those answers, I won't need to make any more comments. My first question is, has any work been done on an increase in traffic in and out of the church? As you all know, in that area, 54 west, 54 east, 64, the traffic is getting very heavy. And we had plans to expand our own rescue work. However, we're concerned that as the church expands, not that it's not their right to use their property for whatever's approved, but that it may hamper our ability to rescue not only cats, but also dogs and any other kinds of animals that we might rescue. Is, is there anything about the, about traffic increase in their plan? I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know how else to ask the question.
Right. Well, our civil engineer did take a look at this, and you can see in the agency comments that if there is an increase in traffic on the site, then there may be some runway improvements that may be required for that intersection of 64 and 54.
All right, thank you.
And in addition to that, if you didn't know it, the county is presently working on improving County Road 64. So that, that's going to obviously take some time.
Tate and I became pretty good friends.
I understand.
So, yeah, we've already worked with the county on our donation of property to that effort.
Okay.
The second question that I have is, is there a school or anything for young children planned with this expansion? And I know Coastal does great work with children. I mean, they, they do phenomenal work with everybody. But is, is this actually going to be a school, or is this just an addition to their church work?
Corey, do you know, do I need to bring the applicant up?
As far as I know, this is just going to be in addition to their church, like Sunday school classrooms and a lobby.
All right, because schools also bring a lot of extra traffic.
Were you agreeing with that, that it's, okay, we just had someone in the back say that it is church, it's not school.
You have the advantage. I can't see.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, was there anybody else that had a question? Because everybody else I had sign up was in support. Was there somebody else over here that, or anybody else on this particular item? Okay? And did, do you folks need to speak, or you're okay? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing then. Unless you have a question, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve CSP 24-19.
Okay, Mr. Mullik has made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seibert, second the motion. Any question on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, then I'm open to public hearing now for case number G, excuse me, CSP. Alright, then I'm open the public hearing now for case number G, uh, excuse me, CSP twenty-four dash twenty-five, G-Paw's Farm. Does anybody need to declare prior communication on this item? Yes, sir. Yeah, just, hang on a second. Alright, Cory, do you want to, is, are you doing this one also?
Yes, sir.
Are you got anything you need to speak on this one before we?
No, sir.
Okay. Alright, if you wanted to speak, you can come on up, I'm not sure if, uh, if you signed up, I just got to pull you up on my screen.
Well, I came today because I, I guess I'm more confused than anything else. And the reason I'm confused is because I received a certified letter in the mail from Baldwin County.
First off, you know, my, give me your name.
John Thompson.
John Thompson, okay, John.
And I live, uh, my property is adjacent to the property that they've proposed, the site plan.
Okay. Go ahead.
But anyway, I received this, uh, certified letter in the mail stating that there had been an application for a site plan submitted to Baldwin County to open this dog kennel business. And I guess I'm confused because are they wanting to open a second building on this same piece of property? Because they've already just built a first building on this property. The daughter who lives on the property and works for G-Paw's called my wife late last year to make her aware that they were going to be building a forty-by-one-twenty building that was going to be their new grooming and dog boarding business, and it was going, they were going to build it on the property right next to our house. So, I came up here, the latter part of last year, and spoke to a girl that, at the desk at the Planning and Zoning Department, and she was not that familiar with what I was talking about, and asked me, could I wait for a few minutes? And I did, and she came back and said that an application had been submitted, uh, for them to open a dog kennel business, but it had not been approved, and since I was an adjacent property owner, I would be receiving a certified letter in the mail for a public hearing before there was anything done whatsoever. Well, then in December, G-Paw's posted on their first Facebook page that they were going to be opening this dog kennel business at this fourteen-three-twenty address. And so, my wife and I were like, well, there's been no public hearing because I've not received any letter. Well, then in March, they post, they started construction in March, on March, early part of March, and they posted pictures on their Facebook page of construction and pouring concrete and all this stuff, and people were commenting, what are you guys building? And their response were, this is going to be our new dog kennel grooming and boarding business, that we're going to move into the building. So, I'm like, okay, well, maybe they got approved and didn't have a hearing about it, and I'm not sure what's going on. And I kept watching their Facebook page, and I have screenshots on my phone, uh, where they've posted all this stuff on their Facebook page, and they were planning to have a, uh, soft grand opening party on July the fourth, and I was at home, so I don't know if they had it or not. Uh, so I guess I'm confused as to why there is a letter coming to me, uh, about site plan approval, uh, because usually that's done before a building permit is issued, and was the building built without a permit? Or if a permit was issued, then why are we just now having a site plan approval hearing? So, I'm totally confused. Is the site plan hearing for the building they just built, that they're getting ready to open, this business? Or are they wanting to put a second building on this piece of property, or?
Okay, hang on, let's get you in there. Cory, can you speak to this?
Yes, sir. Um, the building that's currently on the property, um, was originally, the building that's currently on the property, uh, had a CSP approval, zoning site plan approval for a barn, and now they are changing the use to a kennel, and so this is what triggers commission site plan approval.
Okay, well, I, I don't understand, if they got approved for a building permit to build a barn, and if county inspectors were coming out there during the building process, the first, I've been over to the building and looked at it, and the first forty feet of the building was built out to be a dog grooming business. The remaining eighty feet, the back part of the building is sectioned off with concrete block for dog kennels. I don't know how any inspector in his, unless he was blind, could go out there and inspect construction.
Of time, Mr. Chairman.
Multiple times, and not ask questions as to, what are all these divided blocks here? If it was going to be a barn in a storage building, it wasn't built for that, it was obviously built to be a dog kennel business, they've been advertising on their Facebook page since December of last year.
Alright.
And I'm just now receiving a letter.
Alright, let us, let us deal with that then.
Okay.
So, we'll, let us.
So, the, the letter I received is actually for the building that's already there that's getting ready to open.
That's what it sounds like.
Okay, alright. And how, you said you guys.
We're, we're going to talk about that right now.
Okay.
I want to make sure, is there anybody else on this that has a question on this item? I want, if there's anyone else? So, well, if you've got any additional comments?
Yes, so, th, this is a scenario where, um, an owner can come in and get a, a site plan approval for, which is DSP, which is for a accessory structure for the, for the property, which is what this was permitted as, through the building department, everything. Uh, and that allows them to go build the barn, build, they could build it out interior, however they feel like building, that's, that's their right to do. What it doesn't allow them to do is open a business, such as a dog grooming business, until they get a commission site plan approval. So, even though the, the building's there and a lot of the improvements are already there, this, they can't o, legally open the dog grooming business without getting a commission site plan approval. So, that's why this is for you now, is to, uh, permit it properly for the, the proposed business, uh, use.
So, in other words, they took the risk of doing what obviously was more work than just building a barn, on the basis they, they feel like they're going to get this approval tonight?
That's correct.
So, whatever they.
And that's, that's within their rights to do. Um, yeah, they just could not legally open a business until they got commission site plan approval.
Okay.
Well, and when I visited the site back in March, when they first started construction on it, before they even started pouring concrete, I was told by them that that was their, going to be their new grooming and boarding business.
Alright, so I, I'm going to close the public hearing, so, so we can talk about it. I hear what you're saying, but I think what I'm hearing is, they had every right to build that barn, they could advertise all they want, but until they open that, before they open that business, they got to do this. So, I, let me ask planning commission members, anybody have any questions?
I do, let's, let's, for the sake of argument, because as the gentleman stated, they were advertising an opening on July fourth. So, what is the, let's, let's say, for instance, this happens in, in another situation, and that business does open, what is the recourse at that point? Because what I'm really hearing is, they use the accessory structure permit to prolong having to go through this process to a point where they're going to beg for forgiveness instead of asking for permission.
Well, it's, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a big risk the property owner would take going down that path without getting the proper.
Oh, I, I don't disagree with that.
But the, the recourse is, we do have zoning enforcement, uh, that our department does as well, so if you have, and we stay very busy doing, enforcing situations like this, where if something wasn't properly permitted or constructed, or is not following the regulations, um, that they're, you know, spelled out to call for, for the zoning district, or, or whatever the situation is, then we can put, uh, notice of violations on the property, and it end up actually taking them to court to resolve the violation. So, there is legal consequences for, uh, going down that path without the proper permits.
I have, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, do we know how close the residence is to this structure? Because he says he's right next door, and also, um, if there's any kind of buffer, you know, um, planned? I, I see a landscaping plan, but what kind of noise buffer?
There's a thirty-foot buffer shown on the plan. The thirty-foot landscape buffer.
So, do we know how close the residence is?
I, I don't know.
Because it looks like it was built.
I mean, it's adjacent to my house.
Excuse, hey, excuse me, sir. I can't let you speak, we, you've already had that opportunity. If I start doing, everybody's going to start chiming in, and I, we'll, we'll figure it out. We can call on you if we need to.
I'm just curious if the neighbors would object if it wasn't there? You know, rather than having a discussion about it possibly being already an existing building, if it was actually proposed, if there would be an objection? That's what I'd like to know.
Uh, you're af?
Can I ask?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm. If, if this was a building that was not existing, and it was proposed, would you, um, have an objection to it?
Well, I, first of all, I don't know exactly how many feet it is between my prop, my house and the actual building itself, but part of the reason that I came up here back the latter part of last year.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we would not be able to hear any of this on the recording.
You'll have to come back up to the mic. Thank you, Buford.
Part of the reason that I came back, came up here the latter part of last year and questioned this was because the girl told my wife that the Planning and Zoning Commission would not approve for dogs to be able to go outside, and I don't know if that's still the case or not, but part of my concern was that if somebody went on vacation for two weeks and decided to board their dog that was not allowed to go outside for two weeks, and was going to be stuck in a cage for two weeks, eh, seems a little cruel to me.
So, my question is, if this building was not there, and it was pre-building, and this was a meeting, whether you would have objections to it, is it yes or no?
I would have objection, objections to it depending on what some of the parameters were.
Okay.
But at, at this point, I'm kind of like, my hands are tied, I guess, because the building's already built.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, looking at the site plan, I, I still don't know where the adjacent prop, his building is on his property, but the building itself looks to be at least sixty-five feet from the property line, because it's, there's a thirty-foot landscape buffer, then there's three parking stalls in between the landscape buffer and the building. So, there's a pretty good separation between the. Yeah, it, it looks like his property is, um, his building is, uh, yeah, uh, based in the center of his property, so it's not, I, the buildings aren't very close together, is what I'm saying, yeah.
Any other questions for planning commission sta, uh, members?
I've got one question. I'm just curious, is there any business going on there now? Is there any signs of animals coming in and leaving? As if they're, yes, sir?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, no, no.
I'm sorry.
Is the applicant here?
Yeah.
Could you come up and let you answer that question, please? If you will, give us your name.
Crystal Guyer.
Okay. George, go ahead and ask your question now.
Are there any animals currently on the property? No, sir. No, sir, we're pending the. No pets there. No, sir. We're pending this site plan approval.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the applicant while she's up here? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Or did you have anything else you wanted? I mean, I, I don't want to exclude you from speaking if you wanted to speak.
No.
Alright. I'll close the public hearing. But if everybody needs to ask either the applicant or, uh, Mr. Thompson a question, you're welcome to do that. If not, you can either ask a question, or I'll entertain a motion. And I, I don't mean to rush through this, if there are questions about the site plan or conditions on it, um, as far as they did submit a mitigation plan, it's in the packet.
I'll make a motion, we approve with conditions set forth by staff.
Mr. Davis has made a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Who is that? Okay. Michael. Mr. Fletcher has seconded the motion. Alright, any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I have one, one opposed, so the motion carries. We'll go to our next item, which is, open the public hearing for case number SC twenty-four dash twenty-eight, the Three Amigos subdivision. Does anybody need to clear, declare prior communication on this item? Alright, Ms. Mitchell, do you want to send you, and we just call up our one?
I added one slide, um, before, based on our conversation beforehand, this is the, the site plan that shows the existing sites, so you can see, this is just a sidewalk. So, the buildings do, um, cross the setback lines along the highway construction setback, but not between the adjacent lots, so I just wanted to clarify that, based on our earlier
Anybody have any questions for staff? Alright, I'm looking real quick. If, whoever it was that raised your hand, if you want to just come on up and tell, give
Hello, my name is John Wally, I have the, uh, property right next door, adjacent property.
Okay.
I'm just curious of what's the plan's going to be from what it is now? I mean, they're calling it a three-lot subdivision, is, what's the building, what they're going to do with it?
Um, in fact, we, at this point, we wouldn't ask that question, because all they're doing is dividing the land, and, uh, obviously, there's two existing buildings there that are going to be on two of the lots, and, and, uh, they'll, whatever they do on that third lot, they'll have to meet the zoning, and, and there'll be, be a public hearing for that case.
Correct, and we haven't received anything yet, so.
Yeah, so we, we don't know.
At this point, it's just a subdivision.
So, they're just subdividing the lot?
That's it.
Correct.
Okay.
That's it. So, I'm thinking Three Amigos, I'm thinking apartments, because there's so many apartments coming around me right now, it's.
Yeah, the third lot is only point-six acres, so it wouldn't be large enough to do anything significant.
Okay. So, you have no idea what they have to plan other than getting subdivided?
They said nothing has been proposed, so they could sell it, and then, then they would present a plan, a CSP plan that we would approve.
Okay.
So, there's nothing at this point.
That was my only question.
Okay. Was there anybody else on this item? Alright, I'll close the public hearing. Anybody have any questions?
So, if they sell it, what happens with the encroachment on the building setback? Anything?
So, as long as it's an existing building, it's allowed to exist as a non-conformity. Now, if they were to try to extend it, we, they can't enhance the non-conformity, like they couldn't build another thing in the front. Now, the third lot has nothing on it, so if they sold that, as long as they were staying within the, the setbacks, any new building would conform to the, the setbacks.
What about a change of use?
Change of use, since it's zoned, they'd have to come through with a CSP to change the use.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody know what the purpose of this would be for?
No, sir, when they, when they ask to divide the lots, that's, that's all we're doing tonight, is dividing lots. We don't ask what their intents are, that they have to meet zoning, that's the most important thing to understand. They, the, the property is zoned, so that whatever they do.
The only thing they're doing is asking to subdivide it, they're not changing anything, because right now it's zoned for.
That's correct.
Business, or?
Correct, yeah, it's zoned for business, so you see, so that pink squares all be two, so there's no request for zoning change at this point.
Okay.
Alright, I'm going to close the public hearing, if I didn't already. I will entertain a motion on this one.
Make a motion, we accept it.
Alright, Mr. Bolton's made a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
De Reed, second the motion. Any question on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. That gets us through what we originally started out with the consent agenda. So, let's go down now to our other applications. We'll go to case number Z twenty-four dash nineteen, which is the Fincher property. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Crystal?
Okay, this property is located in Planning District Twelve. The request is to rezone from RSF three to RSF four. It's forty-five point thirty plus or minus acres. The property is located off of Rawls Road, which is a county-maintained road. The applicant is Dwayne Smith and the owner is Charles Fincher. The factory summary has been met. The proposed conform master plan shows moderate development, which is single-family neighborhoods. And this is the locator map and the site map. To the north is zone RSF three and vacant. To the south is zone RSF three and residential. To the east is zone B four, major commercial, B three, general business, and RA. There is some commercial on the B three parcel. To the west is zone RSF three and RSF six, residential, single-family, and it's vacant and residential. The RSF six has homes on them already. And when I looked up the site data to the subdivision to the rear, which is Lakeland Phase Ten, the smallest lot on the site data table was seventy-five hundred square feet, which matches the RSF four zoning square footage, or the required square footage for RSF four. So, unless there's information to the contrary, revealed at the public hearing, staff feels this application should be approved.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for staff? Okay. Is there someone here representing the applicant that'd like to speak?
I have a question.
Hang on, hang on. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Dwayne Smith, Anchor Engineering. I'm the applicant. Basically, this seems like a, you know, pretty straightforward. As I mentioned, it's RSF six. It's really built out to RSF four, kind of wrapping the north and the west. There's a small parcel of RSF three to the north that's been undeveloped. But the larger RSF three to the south, I've spoken to that property owner. They're in support of this and all. And the flume seems to support RSF four in this area and with business across the street. It seems like a reasonable request, but, you know, I'm welcome to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir. Michael, did you have a question now? I got one person signed up in opposition. Okay. Let's see, I've got to find you. By the way, this is not updating. I'm having to find these, search for the names through this long list, so this is going to take a while unless you've got some way of updating it. Normally, I just get the list that's for the application that we're looking at. So, I'm just telling you, because it's taken me a while to find it through the list, all that signed up tonight. Ray Moore?
My name is Ray Moore. I live on Rawls Road. When you opened the meeting tonight, you said that we live in a great county. We do. But we're going to wind up just like the surrounding counties. We've got fair hope that people, the traffic there, you can't even drive around in that city now, in that little area. Where I'm living at right now, they just put in a hundred and seventy home subdivision right across the street from where this is being proposed. There's another hundred and twenty-five home subdivision right down the street from where this is at. There's another hundred and seven home subdivision right around the corner from where this is at. There's another hundred and twenty-two home subdivision right around the corner where this is at. You had another proposal that was tabled tonight for another subdivision that was supposed to go in down the street from us that was tabled because of some drainage. The problem that we have with this is that there are so many homes that are being built in that area. The traffic right there on fifty-nine, I can't even get out on fifty-nine anymore. I have to drive around to get back out. And hopefully, somebody's going to let me out. The traffic is so bad on fifty-nine. The traffic coming down from the school right now on Thompson Road is horrible. The road, the road I live on, Rawls Road, that road turns into Kendrick Road. That road right there, they drag race on that road now. There's so much traffic and there's so many people. And there's so many people dumping stuff. There's people just throwing trash out all over the place down through there. And that all started when all these subdivisions started coming in. There was a nice country living out through there that now is no longer country living because we're dumping subdivisions in. I'm all for the county growing. I am. But I'm all for people buying lots and building houses, not putting in a hundred and seventy homes. How many homes are we talking about for this property? How many homes are you talking about, the developer? How many homes are we talking about on that lot? On that, you don't know? A hundred and seventy? Another hundred and seventy that are going in right down the street from where I live. Get gracious alive, man. I mean, it's going to turn into just a subdivision, period. And what about the roads? Are you going to redo the roads through that area to improve the roads and the utilities? Right now, the electricity goes out through that area right now. Every time any kind of wind blows up through that area, it's going out. I'm opposed to putting any more large subdivisions in. I'm all for the county growing, but I'm opposed to putting these a hundred and seventy home blocks of houses in one area. Enough's enough, guys.
Okay.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all I had signed up to speak. Was there anybody else that didn't? I'm not going to do that. I've done that before and I got in trouble. That was the only one I had signed up to speak. All right. Any questions for staff? Follow-up. Ms. Bates, you have anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so this is a rezoning request. We're obviously not doing a subdivision tonight, but obviously, this is being set up for development. So, this is, this motion will be a recommendation to the County Commission, and then the County Commission has the final say on this. So, anybody have any questions or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Remember, this is a recommendation to the County Commission. Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay, thank you. All right, somebody's got to make a motion.
Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion that we recommend to deny.
Okay.
I'll second.
Ms. Burnett's made a motion that we recommended the County Commission to deny this request. Ms. Stradger has seconded the motion. Any questions on the motion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
I'm going to abstain from both, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I had one abstain and one no, right? Okay, motion carries. So, that will be recommended to the County Commission for denial. Just understand, they will have a public hearing just like we had here, and then they'll make the final decision. All right. With that, we'll go to our next case, which is Z twenty-four dash twenty-one, which is the McCarty property. This is a rezoning request from B two to RMF six. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Okay.
All right, so like you stated, this is Z twenty-four twenty-one, the McCarty property. It's located in Planning District Fifteen. And they're requesting to rezone one point six acres from B two to RMF six. This property is located along State Highway one eighty-one in Daphne, and it's currently being used for commercial purposes. And they are wanting to rezone it for residential purposes. So, when we looked at all the factors, most factors support a rezoning of this property to RMF six. Here are the locator and site maps for the property. As you can see, it's surrounded by HDR, which is a high-density residential zoning. And then the city of Daphne is also nearby, and that's an apartment complex, too. So, it's surrounded by a lot of high-density zonings and uses. These were the agency comments. And staff is recommending approval unless information to the contrary is revealed at the public hearing. And I can answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay, I have two signed up in support and I have none signed up in opposition, so I'll start with Caleb McCarty.
Caleb McCarty, two seven eight nine five, State Highway one eighty-one, Daphne. Thank you, Commission. Obviously, this is fairly straightforward. You typically don't see a downzoning, I'm sure. But yes, the property has been used in a commercial manner. We wish to use the property more in a residential manner at this point.
Okay.
And we support staff's finding, and we appreciate y'all's work.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Miss McCarty? Thank you, sir. All right, how about Greg Bridwell?
Hi, I'm Greg Bridwell, and I appreciate you guys being here today and helping us with this and all the work that the county's done on it already. So, we're surrounded by HDR, and there's, it's high-density all around us. And so, it's a pretty straightforward situation. I'm in a hundred percent support of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. That's all I had signed up. I'm going to close the public hearing. Unless you have a question, I'll entertain a motion. This will also be a recommendation to the County Commission.
Make a motion. We approve it.
Mr. Bolton's made a motion to recommend approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I heard Ms. Stradger on that one also. Any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we'll open the public hearing for case number Z twenty-four dash twenty-two. This is the Lipscomb property, another rezoning case to rezone from B two to RSF two. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Yes, sir.
All right, this is case Z two four two-two, the Lipscomb property. The request is to rezone six point five acres from B two to RSF two. The property is in Planning District Twenty-One. The current use is agricultural slash vacant, and the total property acreage is thirty-six point two acres. Here's the location in Planning District Twenty-One. Here's the site map and the locator map. The adjacent land uses are agricultural, residential, and commercial. And then here, the section outlined with the black lines is the portion that they would like to rezone, just that pink portion of the property. They did meet all but one of the factors that we look at for a rezoning. Their request did not conform to the master plan, but they did meet the rest of the factors. And staff is recommending approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
What caused it not to be compatible with the comprehensive plan from the master plan?
Let me pull that up real quick.
Is it the node and it's just the distance?
There is not a node at this intersection, but if you look at this graphic right here, the section that is going to be rezoned is ideal conservation and conservation development potential. And on this slide, the related zoning districts with those are RR, RA, and RSFE in environmental conservation. So, this would be too intense of a request to meet with the master plan. RSF two does not meet with that.
All right, thank you.
Ben, does the RSF two that's north of this property, is that built out already?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
The RSF two that is north of this, if you go to the zoning slide, the RSF two that's up there and then there's some more around it, is that built out or is it zoned RSF two and vacant?
No, it is vacant.
Okay, thank you.
Ben, the zoning of those neighboring areas, were they adopted when zoning was applied? Did they just come in with zoning? No zoning changes. We just brought those in when we zoned the area, right?
Yes, as far as I'm aware. I'm not sure of every property, but I believe so.
Okay. Any other questions? I had no one signed up. Is the applicant here would like to speak?
Jay Broughton, Broughton and Associates. We are appreciative of y'all's time on this application. So, while it may not conform with the overall master plan, we are downzoning to a less intense usage, going from business, which is currently zoned, to an RSF two. So, while it is tagged for, excuse me, for conservation, we are downzoning it from what is currently allowed. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that y'all have on that.
Okay, any questions?
There's a business on that corner, right?
On the far northeast corner, there's Dollar General there, yes, sir. But that's a separate parcel. It's not...
Exactly. Okay, thank you. In conforming for moderate density, which is what the proposed zoning that you're requesting would be, RSF two, you realize it defines itself as large lots, open spaces to use, large buffer distances, buildings. That's what you're opting for with a moderate density development?
RSF two, yes, that's correct.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Like I said, I had no one else signed up. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll entertain any questions, comments before a motion. If not, again, this will be a recommendation to the County Commission. So, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Fletcher's made a motion to recommend approval of the request. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Mullick, second the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I got one opposed, but the motion carries. Okay. Next item, case number Z twenty-four dash twenty-three, which is the Jim and Donna Enterprises LLC property. This is another rezoning request from RA to RSF one. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Ms. Boykin?
All right. This is a request to rezone a hundred and twenty-four acres. It's currently zoned RA, and the applicant is asking that it be rezoned to... It's currently zoned RA, and the applicant is asking that it be rezoned to RSF1. It's currently vacant. It consists of 124 acres. It's located in Planning District 22, just north of County Road 20 and west of Stucky Road. Here, you can see the locator and the site map. You can see the subject property highlighted, and it's zoned RA. It is surrounded by RA zoning and also RSFE, which is a state. There's one parcel to the north that is zoned RSF1. The surrounding land uses are residential and agricultural. These are all the factors that we review when going through the applicant's requests. You can see that five were not met and four were met. Staff has recommended denial of this request, and if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay. We'll start with the applicant's representative, if you're here. Your John?
Yes, sir.
Give us your full name, John.
John Farley.
Okay.
Okay, where to start? We, of course, we've been working on this property actually for over 20 years. We had a good preliminary meeting, Ms. Corey and everybody, when we discussed, and I want to apologize, because I think some of this could possibly be on me not being clear about the information that we have, because I presented a lot of information tonight to you guys to take a look at. And so maybe that was my fault. But we weren't aware even, I spoke with zoning Monday and said, ask if any of the old maps had been updated, because one of the issues here is, I think it's shown as a conservation property, but we're not dealing with, we have very limited wetland issues. So one of the things I did is called Monday and asked if that had been updated, or they looked at any of the new wetland maps. And they had not at that time. And then I was not even aware until yesterday afternoon that the, that the staff had suggested, you know, not being approved. So at that point, you know, I wanted to prepare this, because again, I think it was on me for not doing a very good job. This property, it is, it's 132 acres altogether, with RSF1 zoning on the seven-acre parcel. We've got RSF1, which is basically across the street there, is what it would be. And then RSF2 in that yellow section, south of 20. So RSF1 zoning, you know, in our mind, does fit. In the proposed land use plan, that front 40-acre parcel is also proposed RSF1 or RSF2. So the only parcel that it still has an overlay of conservation is the 85-acre tract. So on the 85-acre tract in the preliminary meeting, you know, we did let them know that the delineation had been done. Out of that whole 124 acres, there's only 11 acres of wetland. That was done in 2007. You have the core approval letter, the delineation. Obviously, we know we would have to update that as we move forward. But, you know, our folks have already been out there to evaluate it. We have no substantial changes. It has been consistent use for 20-plus years. But, so we're dealing with 11 acres, plus or minus, of wetlands, which is significantly less than many of the properties that are seen here. We do have flood plain, but that's associated with any property that would have a creek or river, and that's one of the things that makes this so special and so desirable. And one of the things we look at with RSF1 zoning, rather than the RSFE, you know, for us to make this a feasible project, if you'll notice on our concept, which this takes into account flood zones, you know, and all the issues that we would face in the development, we have almost a one-to-one ratio of common areas and lots, which is almost unheard of. So that's why the RSF1 zoning with a 30,000-square-foot minimum is so important. Now, some of those lots are much bigger than the 30,000-square-foot limit. But that, this is, this is what we've got to deal with, and this is why we kind of flooded you guys with that. And again, we covered all of this in the beginning, but we, we just felt like, and again, I feel like that's on me, but we definitely have the information to back up why the RSF1 zoning, all three of those tracks are continuous. Like I said, the 40 and the, the seven acres, you know, that's already proposed RSF1, and it's already zoned RSF1. So the 85-acre tract, we can show you everything you've got where it is absolutely viable as a, as a RSF1 tract. So, you know, I wanted to come on and get the information here, even though, like I said, we weren't aware that we didn't have a favorable opinion until yesterday afternoon. We just didn't get a notice. I don't know if we missed it, or whether we're supposed to get it. But we wanted to come, present the case, and show you this, because like I said, this is a family project that's been in works for 20 years. And so, you know, having said all that, we'd love to answer questions if there are any. But at the end of the day, we'd also like to be able to table this for further discussion, and let you guys and all of us kind of sort through the information that we've been able to provide.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Farley? Okay. All right, let me, we've got a couple people signed up in opposition. Let me hear those, and then we'll come back to the... All right, I have Iris Baker.
Hi, I'm Iris Baker. I'm on 9679 Stucky Road, so this property is directly behind my property. And one of the things that we're concerned about, when you're talking about 140 acres or 30 acres, we're looking at the lots, they're gonna be a lot smaller. It's gonna bring in a lot more traffic. We're already having issues. And then, you know, we're looking at probably drainage problems, utility issues, that it kind of brings a big concern to us with having, like, larger tracks. So it is an issue for us as far as, like, flooding, because we did have another parcel that was approved and put on the other side of our subdivision. And when that came, we had no flooding issues whatsoever. Now, the flood, our road completely floods. We have properties that are flooding, not mine, but we do have properties adjacent that are flooding. So to us, this is a concern. So that's why I oppose on this.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Nick Good?
Howdy. My name's Nick Good. I'm pretty much everything south of the Big Blue Square. Pretty much, I echo everybody else's opinions on neighborhoods around here, but opinions don't really matter, facts are what matter. One of the facts that I would like to go over is this land is a lot of wetlands, is a lot of conservation areas, and it should be treated as such. It's been farmland and around farmland for years, and it's, it should remain as such. We have, when you start adding in houses to these areas that are farmland areas and everything, you start to come with the people that complain about issues, they complain about everything. And it's not gonna be fair 10 years down the road, people come in, start forcing farmers and the locals out of the area. We have, again, like everybody else mentioned, traffic issues. I live County Road 20. That's a two-lane road. It's not possible to widen that road. There's, you can't. There's two-lane bridges, you can't widen that road. There's already a stop sign, it's a three-way stop. If you add these many houses on there, that stop sign already backs up almost a mile long in the mornings, it's not gonna work. There's already, south of that, another 100-and-something-acre lot going in. Let's assume every person has one car, that's 100-something cars on the road every morning. What's that gonna do to traffic? You had that many cars in for internet, power, water, sewer, it's not viable. And I don't know of anybody that can present a plan to make that viable, not to mention all the economic and the agriculture and the, just the environment. You have animals, you have communities of people that have lived here because it's in the country, and it should be treated as such. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's all I had signed up to speak. Any questions?
Selena, do you have a bigger picture of the flume? A bigger, with the flume on it?
I've got a paper copy. If you'd like that, as far as the concept.
This is all I have in the presentation for the flume.
Thank, thank you.
You need to come back to the mic.
And, and that was in the handouts that I gave you, and I know that was a lot of information together, but, you know, again, we are definitely aware, you know, conservation is a big part of this. Again, you know, we're talking about a one-to-one ratio with our lots, and then, again, we were mindful of the wetlands. The delineation was done almost 20 years ago, in anticipation of someday this is gonna be a developable property. You know, it's been a 20-year investment for the folk, the family that's involved in it. They're mindful of the surrounding, they've been neighbors and friends, and they know everybody around here. So this is not an outside company or corporation coming in. This is a family that spent 20 years keeping it up, keeping it clean, farming it, you know. This is not an outside force. But, you know, they did this study 20 years ago to assure that, then the day came, that the, this property became viable, that they could do so without interfering. Wetlands is a big issue. We all want to maintain the environment and conservation, and this plan does absolutely that. The other thing is, you know, unfortunately for some people, the growth, Baldwin County is growing at an alarming rate. It is incredible, the growth here. And even in the, in the study that's done for the future use, I mean, it shows that the Foley area, as far as jobs and workers go, the density is incredible right here. With that density of jobs and workers, there are, there have to be places to live. And that's one of the things that is addressed in the future use plan. And, and yes, you know, the reality of it is, in the 30 years that we've been involved in subdivisions and developing, we've never seen a subdivision that wasn't either a farm, timberland, or, you know, cropland, because those are the large tracts of land. So, you know, we're trying to be mindful of that and moving forward, but again, we want to give you a chance to look over.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
All right. And we have a couple options here from, the recommendation by staff is that we recommend denial for the case, and we can send that on to the County Commission. You can obviously recommend opposite of that, if you want to recommend approval, or, as I heard the applicant ask, if you feel like you need more time for some reason on this item to look at it, you can certainly table the item, which I heard the applicant say he would welcome if, if that was the, I think, opposed to going to the denial stage, but that's up to you at this point.
Selena, I know we're talking about rezoning, but you feel like you've, and staff said all the information that you need to come to the conclusion that you did?
Yes. Because we're, we're only considering the rezoning and not the subdivision part.
Right. All right, any other questions?
I, I do have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
It looks, it's for staff. On the northwest corner, it shows a parcel, RSF1.
Yes.
What is that? Is it, do you know if it's constructed as a home, or it's, what is it?
Let me see if I can zoom it in. It could have been a, when we had automatic rezonings, you could automatically go to RSF1.
Okay.
Looking at, I mean, looking at the aerial, doesn't look like there's anything on there right now.
Okay, thank you.
Jay, we addressed this in work session, and I'm, and I'm gonna have, you're gonna have to explain it to me again. This, this automatic rezoning process, when, when does that kick in? What, what causes that?
We, we don't allow that anymore. It was a previous regulation practice that you could request an automatic rezoning from an RA district to RSF1. That practice has been implemented a quite a while, yeah.
All right, so we don't, we don't do that anymore. That, that's fine. But there are, moving forward, there are going to be parcels that are gonna be adjacent to these type developments that are going to show up as, I mean, we're gonna have one in three cases from now. They're gonna show up as RSF1. So my, my question is, is how do we evaluate that when it comes to, because the bottom line is, the parcel is there that says RSF1, yet we're, we're being told because it was an automatic rezoning, we should not address that as though it's a parcel that's zoned RSF1?
Correct. So Selena, if you don't mind going back to the 10 criteria. So that's why we have a couple of these other ones, so you can take a more holistic look at it. So just because it has an adjacent zoning that is a like zoning, does not mean it meets the criteria. So we also look at, is it compatible with the existing development patterns of the area? Is it compatible with the future land use map? Is it compatible with the development patterns, like what, you know, what's, what's happening? How is development progressing in the areas? So that, it lets us look at it at a little bit broader brush to understand that just because something may have, in the past, had an automatic RA to RSF1, doesn't mean that, well, it's adjacent to RSF1, it should automatically be RSF1. We have to look at, there's, there's a lot of cases, like, as you mentioned, we'll see some more in a little bit, that things were autom, in the past, automatically converted to RSF1, but nothing was ever built on them. So they're just, they're still agricultural land that's just happens to be zoned RSF1. And, and actually, this case here, as Ms. Burnett brought up, is that we actually have one just adjacent to this that was an automatic RA to RSF1 parcel that's never been built on. It's right there on the creek, probably in a flood zone, if I had to guess. There's not very little you can do with it. So to answer your question, that's why we have all these other criterias, so we can start looking at kind of the whole picture of what's going on in the area of the proposed rezoning, and not just one element of what's happening. And you kind of have to make a judgment call with every, with all the information available, what makes sense, how it meets our regulations.
Okay. Any other questions? You'll have to come all the way back up, because you have to speak to the mic, and this will be the last one. Since you're the applicant, I'm gonna allow it.
You just asked the question, you said, do you feel like you had all the information you need to make that recommendation? And my question was, you know, again, that recommendation you're saying is, is for conservation, and there are criteria that you use for that, areas that have, you know, government control and things like that. Again, this parcel, the information I've just presented you, we have less restrictive areas to deal with on this 85 than we do on a lot of properties we work with. So it doesn't meet the criteria for conservation. It meets the criteria for our RSF1 zoning parcel in the rear, and in the future use plan, the 40-acre tract adjoining it is scheduled or suggested to be RSF1. So what we're saying, what we wanted to clear up is, the 85-acre tract, you did not have the information to evaluate it, because you overlaid it with a conservation map, I mean, a wetland map that was old. If you'll see in that handout I gave you, our wetland delineation and the new updated wetland maps are identical. There are 11 acres of wetlands on that property, out of 124. So it does not meet the conservation criteria. So I was just, I wanted to make sure that's on the record. It does fall within the, the other zoning, the RSF zonings around it, so...
So it's not just about the conservation? And Selena, if you can bring up the zoning map, that shows everything going on around it? So the, the conservation is just coming from the future land use map, which is just one component. And, and a rezoning case doesn't have to prove that it's zoned properly as it's currently zoned. It has to, it has to prove that the zoning you're requesting meets the 10 criteria of the zoning ordinance, so that we're not necessarily evaluating the current zoning against that, we're evaluating the proposed zoning. And so when you look at that map there, yeah, you have that one isolated pocket of an undeveloped RSF1 parcel there, but everything else in the area is RSFE, which is a state-sized lots, residential, and RA. You have one subdivision to the south that was more dense, but that was done prior to zoning and prior to the current regulations. It's actually zoned RA, so it's a, it's a legal non-conforming use right now. So when you start looking at the, the bigger picture of everything going on in the area, you know, the RSF1 is kind of the anomaly that sits in here, when it's, when everything else is very rural in nature and rural in development patterns. So when you saw those five or whatever criteria that it didn't meet, this is, we're looking at all those, all those elements together, not just, not... at all those elements together, not just, not just saying, "Well, the zone doesn't meet the conservation." Well, you're not asking for conservation. You're asking for RSF-1. And what we're saying is the criteria and the zoning ordinance, it doesn't comply with those items to support the rezoning request.
Well, and that's what I'm puzzled by. That's what's got me, is why then there's the 40-acre tract, which is the tract adjoining it, in the future, if you can pull up the future use plan that shows it as RSF-1 or 2.
There's some modernism for that, yeah.
So the 40-acre parcel, what's the difference? They're joining their adjacent tracks, so the 40-acre.
The difference is that 85-acre parcel has a lot of flood zones, has a lot of potential wetland.
That's what I'm saying.
The FEMA maps, I'm looking at FEMA maps. It's got flood.
And we've shown it on our drawing. It's less than, I mean, it's a tiny percentage of that property. And anything that has a creek on it is going to have flood, or that's what makes it a desirable property. So those are not negatives, those are positives. But I just, that's my biggest thing, how in the world can that 40-acre be RSF-1 or 2?
Again, the future land use map is just one component. And the future land use map actually isn't even a regulatory document, it's a guideline.
Oh, absolutely.
And so you'll see a lot of, oftentimes, there's contradictions in the future land use map to the built environment and to what, you know, what makes sense from a bigger picture, what should go in place. So it's not, just the future land use map alone can't determine if a rezoning should be supported or not. It's just a very, very high-level, broad-brush look at where development should be expected to occur and where it shouldn't.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, I mean, you're kind of proving my point with that 40-acre.
But there's not, there's not, there's not other criteria that don't support that.
But the other criteria does. If we sit down, that's why I asked to table it and let's go back through and discuss this, because if you zoom out on that map, you keep going, "Hey, we got a little parcel here." You look at Foley and the density and the developments that's going on, it is absolutely...
That's a regional, that's, I mean, you're talking about two cities over at that point.
No, but you're talking about, this is a fluid map. This area is growing, that will be a subdivision.
I mean, we can certainly table and discuss more, but I think...
Yeah, I'm going to call this conversation to an end and let's make that decision. All right, either you've heard enough, you either want to table it for further, so they can, staff and the applicant, discuss it and bring us a recommendation back, or you can move forward with the recommendation by staff. So unless you have a question, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we table this case so that there can be further discussion regarding the zoning recommendation from staff between them and the applicant.
Second. Mr. Iverson has made the motion to table it. Mr. Bolton has made a second of the motion. Anybody have any questions on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, do we want to specify to what meeting you're tabling?
To the next meeting.
Will that work? Okay, so this will be tabled to the next meeting. You're good with that, Mr. Bolton? All right, any questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One opposed.
Motion carries. So this will be tabled to the next meeting. All right, before I move on to the next one, does anybody need a five-minute break on the planning commission? I have one or two, so we'll take a five-minute break. I'm going to call us back to order. Okay. We have four cases left. I'm going to go to the next case, which is case number Z24-24 Keith Property and PRD 24-03 Graydon Place. I'm going to open the public hearing for these. Does anybody need to clarify our communication on this item?
I'd like to recuse myself on this one, please.
Okay, Mr. McKinnon, he's going to recuse himself on this item. Okay, Ms. Mitchell?
All right, and this is two separate cases, so you'll be looking at both the rezoning and the PRD together. And so this is a request for a 24-site residential development and a rezoning from RHRSF-1. So this is approximately 20 acres, and they are proposing 24 sites. A lot of things have not been turned in yet, things like traffic studies and full drainage reports, so those will all be done later, the subdivision stage if this is approved. And I did want to point out, there was one miscommunication between staff and the applicant about a wetland report. We were saying you don't need a wetland determination, which is a core report, but they did need a delineation, but they misunderstood to think they did need one. So what they have done is to reflect the parcel viewer wetland map with a 50-foot buffer, which is wider than what we'd normally require. So there might be some adjustments to that later. Oops. Let's see what it is in the county. You can see some of the adjacent zoning. This whole area is RA and B C Z zoning, and then across Highway 98 is unzoned at this point. So this is the checklist, and I can come back to that later. So when we go through the criteria for rezoning, excuse me, you can see that there are other smaller parcels in this area that would justify moving towards some smaller, a zoning that allows smaller lots. This is a fairly recently zoned area, so there haven't been a lot of rezonings yet just because it's so new as a planning district. And this is one of the points that kind of tipped us toward approval. It's, it is near one of the nodes down here, see where the red star is. So this area is kind of seen as a growth area, a growth node. So although the parcel itself would lean toward larger lots, it is on 98, and again, by one of those nodes. So those kind of offset the flume map to show it is a growth area that could have potential for a higher-density residential development. Let's see, and I think there was a typo in the narrative that it said 102 lots, but it was actually 24. So this is the PRD. So as you can see, this, again, has not been delineated, so it's a very large wetland area, and in reality, it will probably be smaller than that. And so this buffer will contract, and ideally, that would allow more of the open area. So I'll get to the conditions in a moment. And you can see a landscape buffer, there is some adjacent agricultural use, so that requires 40-foot buffers, and then the adjacent lower-density residential use in the road have 20-foot buffers. And I added this in to adjust, oops, sorry, the questions about the lot size and the setback requirements. I didn't have that in the original staff report. And you can see that the setbacks are the standard 30-foot front and rear and 10-foot side. And I also put this in here from the zoning ordinance, saying that a PRD, you can request changes to the dimensional requirements, including lot size with setbacks and building height. So just so you know, those are included in there. And then I want to go back to the open space, well, I'm going to go back so you can see the whole thing first. So you can see that in this one, the open space is all fairly consolidated, it's easily accessible, because this is a very long road. And then they have several amenities that they're proposing. Now, these are just conceptual pictures, like it might not look exactly like this, but they would put in volleyball courts, pavilion, a soccer softball field, playground, and walking trail. So those are, each element is required, but it may or may not look like the ones in these images. So our staff comments, we felt like the open space was mostly contiguous and accessible, multiple amenities. The detention, sorry, the detention ponds do look small, and so there's a potential that they will have to be enlarged in the construction plan review, but that would be done later at the subdivision stage. But we want to ensure, as one of the conditions of approval, that if the ponds are enlarged, that the green space would have to expand as well to maintain the same amount, so that you couldn't take up all your green space with detention. And that's why we added that as a condition of approval. But I'll come to that in a second. We'll look at the rezoning request first. So the rezoning request is to go from RA to RSF-1. So that is an increase in intensity, and if you want to decide on that first before we put the conditions of the other, or go ahead and present them both?
Go ahead and do both.
Okay. And so the PRD recommendation, we are recommending approval, and so it's approval for both. But there are some conditions, obviously, that have to prove, you would have to approve the rezoning first during construction plan review. If the detention ponds must be enlarged, the area of usable open space shown in the site plan, which is five acres, must be maintained. And then that the wetland buffer could be adjusted to reflect a new wetland report, but they cannot add additional lots with that extra space without coming before you again for approval. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions for staff? No one?
I've got a question. For the rezoning part of it, we have, under the analysis, there were a few questions that I had, and maybe you can answer it, and I think you did the other day. The two buildings, or the three lots all the way down, those B2 lots, they were there prior to zoning, correct?
The ones here in the corner?
Yeah.
They were brought in that way, because this is a new planning district, so what they did, they looked at the flume map, and that area was designated as a node. And so when they brought in this planning district, they made that a business node, knowing that that would be an area proposed for future growth. So, again, this is a new planning district, so basically what you see is how it was brought in. So the business in that intersection, and then the rest, large lots are RA, and then the smaller ones are B C Z.
Perfect, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? I have, Ms. Burnett, oh, I'm sorry. I had no one signed up to speak on this. Is there someone here representing the project, the applicant? Okay, you want to come up? If you want to, that's up to you.
Dwayne Smith, Anchor Engineering, 9940 Bromley Road. Like Sean said, we're just trying to get this to the lowest-density level, single-family. We believe we've provided a lot of green space, a lot of amenities. Kind of, in my mind, what the, I would think the planning commission's been asking for is more things for the people living in a neighborhood. So that we saw the PRD as a great opportunity to do that, and allows us, we still have good-sized lots in the neighborhood, but with the landscape buffers, you've got a lot of buffer with the surrounding properties, and we really think it's a, considering right on 98, we think it's a real sensible development.
Okay.
I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
There's only one-way entrance off of 98, right?
Yes, sir, it's less than 30 lots.
Yeah, I understand that. It's in my neighborhood, it's on Highway 3, is not, you can't get to it from Highway 3.
That's correct.
Okay.
The only entrance is on 98.
And that's, I'm just right down the street from me. And I kind of like it, because I like the bigger lots and the value of the houses, what's going to be, not going to be a cookie cutter.
These are tended to be nice homes.
Yeah.
And all.
Yes, I'll open the public hearing for both, and I'll just soon go ahead and speak to both, and then we can take action separately, we can do it together, but right now, we're going to speak to both.
So this PRD, the spirit of it is, all right, well... So this PRD, the spirit of it is, all right, well, we'll let you pack in more houses, smaller lots, and the trade-off is that there's more green space for the people that live there to enjoy. It's a big trade-off, and I just, there's not a lot, I mean, there is some green space there, but I'm just not, for what the property owners would give up, and the community would give up for that green space, that's kind of the compromise. I would love to see a lot more green space there. You know, if the trade-off is much smaller lots, more density packed in, that is the spirit of a PRD, is to allow for, you know, we do that with the intent of providing more green space. That's the intent of the smaller lots and the density.
Well, it does have in excess of 20% green space. That's a pretty significant number.
Mr. Keough could say that the PRD doesn't allow you to increase density. Your underlying zoning district dictates your density, so you don't get more lots. What the PRD does, it allows you to request special deviations from the area dimensional requirements of lots, so you can have smaller or different lot sizes and different setback requirements. But the trade-off of that is, is the more, you know, green space for the neighborhood. And the idea, but the concept behind that is that, obviously, if you have smaller lots, you have less private space for the families to use, so you would want to increase the public space within the neighborhood for those families. So it's a good trade-off. That's why, a lot of things we do during our review process is making sure those green spaces are activated, they're actually usable, and things that the residents can use, since they're going to have smaller, you know, personal, private lots.
Yeah, so I think it's 1.45 units per acre that you can have in RSF1, and then this is looking at 1.2.
Right.
Lots per acre.
Yeah, like lots, it's on the first page, I put the, and we calculate the density removing half the wetlands. So 18 acres divided, or 24 lots divided by 18 acres is 1.33 units per acre, and you're allowed 1.45 by RSF1. So, Aaron's correct. So the density is lower than what's allowed by RSF1, but the lot sizes are smaller.
All right, anyone else? Thank you, sir. All right, I had no one else signed up to speak on this one. So I'll close the public hearing. And we do have the option here, we can take these separately, or you can make a motion to approve them both. So I'll allow discussion first, if somebody feels like we need to separate, and you want to separate them for some reason, otherwise, Ms. Burnett?
This particular PRD appears to have the same setbacks that are required in the underlying zoning area. And so I've always been a proponent of separating them, but I'm fine with keeping these together.
Okay. If anyone has a different feeling about that, say so now, but otherwise, we'll take these together. No other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Both?
Both.
So that's a recommendation to the county commission to approve the rezoning, and then a recommendation to approve the PRD, right?
Correct.
All right.
I second that.
Mr. Day's made a motion, then, do we approve? And Ms. Burnett seconded that motion. Anybody have any questions on the motion? And those are subject to staff conditions, I'm sure. Okay. No questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Had one opposition. All right, Mr. McKenzie is back. We will now open the public hearing for case number Z24-25, the Frank property, and also with it, another PRD with this case, 24-02, called Farmington. So does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Okay, Ms. Boykin?
All right, yes. This is two cases, one for a rezoning and one for a PRD. The property is located north of Warner Road and just west of County Road 95. The proposed use is 102-unit planned residential development. It is currently zoned RA, rural agricultural, and the request is for RSF1, single-family. The total lots that's being requested is 102. The applicant's density is 1.34 acres. The required density is no more than 1.45. They meet the open space and usable space requirements. This is where the subject property is located. Here's the locator and site map. You can see there's RA zoning and some RSF1 zoning. Most of the lots in the area are larger, and they're either agricultural or residential use. Here are the factors when we considered the rezoning. You can see there's five that were not met, and four that were, and one that was questionable. For the rezoning, staff feels that the requested change is not compatible with the area. There have been few modifications to the land use in the surrounding areas. There were, most of the parcels that you see are RSF1, are large lots that are undeveloped that went through the automatic rezoning process when we allowed that. The majority of the future land use for the subject property is rural agricultural potential, which is RR, RA, and RSFE is what's recommended for this flume. Most of the parcels zoned RSF1 are vacant or farmland. There is a subdivision to the west that is zoned RSF1, but they are larger lots, they are estate-sized lots. Here are the PRD details. You can see they are proposing two entrances onto Warner Road. Here's the landscape plan. They have some 40-foot buffers because they're adjacent to agricultural, and then there's also 20-foot buffers. These are the proposed amenities. They're proposing pickleball courts, a pavilion, playground, walking trail. This is the narrative that the applicant provided. Some of staff comments for the PRD is multiple amenities are proposed. They provided open spaces located behind lots and difficult to access. There is no centralized open space, and approximately three acres of open space are located along Warner Road. Detention ponds appear to be undersized and will likely expand to the usable open space. However, the wetlands have not been delineated and likely will be reduced from what is shown on the site plan. The proposed lots are much smaller than parcels in the surrounding area. Staff's recommendation for the rezoning is denial, and the recommendation for the PRD is also recommended for denial. And if the planning commission does choose to approve these two requests, there are four conditions listed below.
Okay. Questions for staff? Okay. No questions? The applicant's representative want to come up and speak to this one? You know, we had empty chairs up here, you could have just sat up here, since you had so many tonight.
Next time, I'll sit next to you guys. So this one, once again, we're trying to go to the lowest-density, single-family zoning we can. We didn't maximize the density within the neighborhood. We're trying to create as much green space as possible as, excuse me, as they said, we don't think the wetlands, as shown, we are really anywhere close to what it shows. So what you'll find ultimately would be, is the green space even gets bigger. As for the layout of the green space, it was late in the game when we realized that the staff may have had some potential issues with where the amenities were. We have no problem if you were to approve, recommend the zoning, tabling the PRD, and we'll work with staff to get the amenities and green spaces where they think is more appropriate. It was nothing more than, we were thinking more amenities between the homes and then surrounding properties was a better thing than amenities in right in the center of the neighborhood, pushing the lots out close to surrounding properties. Staff has a disagreement with where they would like the amenities. We don't have a problem with that. That's easily adjusted. It's really, the main thing is, you know, there is some RSF1 in this area. I understand it was back when you could do automatic rezonings and stuff, but at the end of the day, there's going to be some single-family development that occurs outside of a city, and we're trying to do it in the most responsible way possible, such that we minimize the disturbance to the neighbors and all the infrastructure and stuff.
Okay. Any questions for the?
I have a question. Did you all consider the RSFE? It would be, I think, 28 houses left?
Yes, I mean, RSFE is a very, very low-density. I mean, it's not really a single-family density, it's a rural density. And it's really hard to, quite frankly, make a project viable with that low a density.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. I have one signed up in opposition, Kim Frank.
Kim Frank, I live at 2742 Opecan Lane in Alberta, just one street over. Our main concerns, my family farms this area, and there are, there are two sizable farms right in this area, and several others around. When we move farm equipment down 95, it is a nightmare now. Everybody uses 95 to get from 32 to 98. They don't pay attention to the speed. They don't care, you know, if they're passing, my child driving a tractor. It's dangerous on 95 already. I can't imagine adding 100 more families. And then the drainage, anytime you change the drainage anywhere in this area, you are affecting everybody else. The subdivision that's being built at 95 and Kaiser has already messed up the drainage on 95, and we're already seeing it like half a mile down the road, where we've got, we've got a corner of a field that we can't plant because it's too wet and it doesn't drain anymore. There are people on 95 who are going to have their houses flooded the next time we have some substantial rain, because that subdivision that's being built has already messed it up. So our concerns are mainly traffic and drainage. The other thing is, if you drive down Warner, Warner is lovely. Big houses, big lots, small farms. People are living the good life out there, and this doesn't fit in. This is, that's an insane amount of houses to go in that small, small area. And then there's a clay pit on the backside of that, so I'm not sure how the, I'm not sure how the clay pit factors in with the wetlands and everything else that's around there. But anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have signed up to speak. I'll close the public hearing. Okay, so on this one, same options we had before. You can either do these together. You heard the applicant say if you, you can have the option of recommending the rezoning and giving them time to modify the PRD if you choose to do that. But staff has made a recommendation that we deny both cases. So first off, do you have any questions or comments? Any questions for staff? Ms. Boykin, do you have anything else you needed to add? I don't want to?
No, we did receive a couple of emails and letters of opposition.
Okay.
Jay, how do we, I'm going to ask the same question I ask every week. How do we evaluate this in light of the subdivision that is literally a mile to the south? That granted, the RSF4 zoning was already in place, so they were able to do that, but again, it is three times as dense, you know, it's, you know, it's coming in, but yet, we're supposed to deny this one, and there's a mile difference. And it also, it reflects it on the flume, too.
Yeah, and this, especially in this area of the county, there's several other areas, but this is a good example where, you know, going a mile down some of these county roads, the characteristics of the community changes drastically.
I'm aware.
So, you know, something like the other subdivision you're talking about, if it was already zoned RSF4, or whatever it was, obviously, they have those rights to develop it.
I understand that, but it also, but it creates a level of complexity for us.
It does.
While I, you know, I completely appreciate, you know, the engineer, they have done a tremendous job, and I, and I've said it before, I can't be opposed to RSF1. I mean, that's a 30,000-square-foot lot. I mean, I'm okay with that. Reducing them down, you know, I don't care how many bocce ball courts they build, you know, a 30,000-square-foot lot and a 12,000-square-foot lot, there's a difference. You know? But again, I struggle to evaluate that when there's one that, like I said, it's a mile away.
Well, I'd say-
And we won't talk about the RSF1 that's already there, ever how it got there.
Right, so if you, if you think in the context of some of the other planning districts in the county where they have the community nodes, and we actually have some of the community nodes out here in the future land use map, yeah, those community nodes that has that higher-intensity use, like you're talking about, those are literally within, you know, a quarter-mile of an intersection or something. So going a mile out, like I said, the characteristics of the community changes pretty drastically. So when you look at the map here and look at the aerial, just looking at what's going on in the area, it is, you know, primarily agriculture with some large estate lot residential uses in the area. It would appear some wetlands to the north with the wooded area. And then, again, then you look at the zoning map, so that, well, move back up, that kind of gives you, sets the stage for your development pattern. So you kind of, the stuff that happened a mile away, that's, in planning terms, that's a little bit of a stretch down the road. So you see the development patterns in the aerial, and then you look at the zoning, the zoning map on the left there, and you can see that pretty much the only RSF1 in the area were results of the automatic RA RSF1. They're still being used as a rural agricultural use, they just converted the zone at some point in time in the past. So again, kind of like I explained with the previous case, is you look at all those factors together and kind of understand what, you know, kind of what the current patterns are, what the current zoning of the area is, and also look at what, what kind of generally the future land use map guides us to do in these areas. So in this case, you know, this is one of the areas of the county that's really, on pretty much all fronts, doesn't have to be kind of a rural area of the county, and maintain some type of rural zoning district, whether it be RA or RR or maybe even RSF1, which is getting into the residential district. But that's kind of what you would contemplate in the rural areas of the county, and that's kind of what all of our documents set up for these kind of evaluations.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we recommend denial.
On both?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Burnett's making a motion to recommend to the county commission denial of the rezoning and denial of the PRD.
I'll second.
Your strategist seconded the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That's one, one no, but that's, motion is approved. Okay. Two more cases. The next one is Halls Creek Farm, case number SC24-25. The next one is Halls Creek Farm, case number SC 24-26. We'll open the public hearing on this item. Does anybody need to clarify our communication on this one? Ms. Mitchell?
Sorry, I was trying to find it. There we go. All right, this is a, um, a large lot subdivision where every lot is at least 20 acres, and they're requesting 28 lots. It is unzoned, uh, and again, large lot subdivisions are exempt from a lot of the requirements, um, as far as traffic studies and drainage improvements and that sort of thing. So you can see it's up in the north part of the county, Planning District 2. See the surrounding area, uh, and this is formerly timberland, so you can see a lot of the old timber roads crossing it. So these are the proposed lots. And so these are all accessed by 60-foot ingress egress easements. Uh, and so you can see how they kind of go down and connect to all these. So, um, there are three different access roads, and so we had just a couple. The first one is very minor. There, one of these existing dirt roads, we just, one of the conditions is just to show it continuing through the property, because there's, there's some, um, properties to the west that are accessed via that road. Uh, and then this is in, um, something that we requested. This egress, uh, accesses 17 lots, and so we've requested or required that they install a commercial turnout there. And so in order to do that, because that involves infrastructure, they can't use the typical concurrent approval, because that's only valid for 90 days. So they'd only have 90 days to install, you know, apply, install it, get it signed and recorded. So what we do in these cases, they have to convert it to preliminary plat. So that's just something on our ends that's really straightforward. Uh, so that's one of the conditions of approval, convert, convert it to preliminary plat, then get the turnout permit, and install the driveway. Any questions?
Okay, any questions for staff? Okay.
Nope, I have a question. Is it typical to have that many lots on an easement rather?
No, it is not. It is not. But that's just one of the, the things that the regulations, our 20-lot subdivisions, you know, normally they're not, you'll have like four or five. Uh, but this is a huge, like 600 and something acre lot, like it's an entire section. So, so yes, this is unusual, and that's why, um, a request to put in a commercial turnout for this kind of development is unusual.
Will the easement, um, be improved to allow emergency vehicles and garbage trucks?
That is not required, um, because this is one, like we would never have a development with dirt roads typically, you know, for a typical kind of development, but because these are all 60, I'm sorry, 20 acres, they don't comply with those kinds of things. Now, I did talk to the owner or the developer, and he is improving the roads and since he's grading them, filling ruts, stabilizing them in addition to the driveway. So, you know, he's making them more passable, but they're not required to be improved to accommodate things like that. Because a lot of these are intended for like hunting camps and things like that, you know, just a, a weekend retreat or whatever. Like, we don't dictate the use, but, but that's typically what these things are for.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Okay, I have, uh, Mr. Tillman is the, see here? Do you want to speak?
Not much we have to question.
All right, Mr. Tillman, you're the, uh, the applicant. So if anybody has any questions for the applicant, he can come up for that. All right? If you don't have any questions, then I'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry, I probably did not. I'll close the public hearing. Thank you, sir. Now I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Fletcher's made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
A second.
Ms. Strategers, second to motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. One opposition, motion carries. All right, our last case, I'll probably minutes pronounce this, Smiralia Kennels. Was that close?
You got it.
All right. I'd go to speech class to learn that one, but. Anybody need to clarify our communication on this item? Ms. Rhodes?
This is case CSP 2412, Smiralia Kennels. Here's the location, um, of the kennels in the county. The request is CSP approval for a dog kennel. The property is located in Planning District 12 and zoned RA. This is rural agriculture. It's located east of the Baldwin Beach Express and north of Farmer's Lane in the Robert Still area. The applicant is Mr. Chris Leib with Leib Engineering, and the owner is Sherri Smiralia. Uh, the request is a dog kennel. Here's the locator map and the site map. As you can see, the adjacent land uses are all agricultural with residential to the south and all RA zoning. Here's the sign for the property, and then the subject property, and then the adjoining properties. Some background on this, uh, this property has received numerous complaints for barking dogs over the years. Upon investigation, it was determined that the kennel was in operation before zoning was adopted for Planning District 12. Planning District 12 adopted zoning in November of 2006. Uh, since then, there have been various improvements to the property since zoning, uh, without acquiring approvals. Uh, the improvements have triggered this CSP approval. Um, this is 18.9.2C and E are the, um, factors that triggered CSP approval. Some issues have been addressed, um, such as removing buildings out of the rear and side yard setbacks, removing property lines to consolidate the property to meet the setbacks, and then a common lot line move to meet front yard setbacks. And then here is the staff analysis and findings and what triggered the CSP approval. Here's a little bit of aerial photography. This is from June of 2006, so right before zoning was adopted for Planning District 12. And then in November of 2019, you can see, um, there's been quite a bit of development on the property. And then finally, in April of 2023, additional development. Here are the zoning requirements for RA, and then our zoning use table, showing that kennels are a permitted use in RA zoning. Here's the site survey, and the numbers reflect, um, the floor plans of the buildings. Here's a zoomed portion of the site survey. Here's the wetland delineation report. There are, um, wetlands on the property. And here are the floor plans associated with those numbers, um, on the buildings. The parking plan, and they do meet the requirements for the amount of parking. Um, there is a delivery location, an apron was poured for any delivery trucks that could not get up Rolling Ridge Drive. The septic and sewer plan. The drainage narrative, which has been accepted by the permanent engineer, and their landscaping plan. Agency comments. Um, in terms of the staff analysis and findings, um, as mentioned earlier, the dog kennel was established before Planning District 12 adopted zoning in 2006. So we do have structures on the property that don't meet the setback requirements. However, the property owners have been working with staff to come into compliance. All of this is in your staff report. They do have a kennel management and operations plan that will be kept on file in the Planning and Zoning Office. And staff recommends approval with, um, certain conditions. So these are the conditions that are unique to this project. Any existing structure on the site plan that does not have a solid roof is allowed to remain within the setbacks as approved by the prior planning director. And then a copy of the kennel management plan, as mentioned earlier, will be kept in the Planning and Zoning Office. And then we have our standard, um, conditions of approval. And I will note, number six, the bolded portion that, um, the Planning Commission may revoke approval at any time upon finding that the permitted use will or has become unstable or incompatible in its location as a result of any nuisance or activity generated by the use. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Questions for staff?
I have a question. Do you recall in your definition of dog kennels or about this particular, can they have dog breeding as well? Is that part of the activities that are allowed?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Back to that slot, I have the definition of kennels. Just gotta find it up here. Here we go. And do you see it says right here, breeding? That's part of the definition of the kennel.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for staff? I have several signed up, so I'll call on those. Uh, Michelle McCarty or Chris Leib or both? I'll let, since y'all are. All right, I'll let, all right. So Chris and, and Michelle both are, uh, the applicant, so do you have any questions for them? I'll call them up if you do. All right, let's let these that are in opposition come up, and you may need to come up after all. Mr. Hopper, I know you, and, and they put you down as Hopper Glenn, and, and that seemed odd to me when I saw that. So you, I know you as Glenn Hopper, so you come on up.
Thank you, sir. I am Glenn Hopper. I'm 26620 Ard Road. I live due east of this puppy mill, not a dog kennel. It is a puppy mill. Can you? This is on my front porch. If you can hear that. Every day, for the past 20 years, that's what I've heard. It's been hell. I'm just gonna tell you. I have called, I have asked, I have begged and pleaded. They do nothing about it. They won't do nothing about it. In fact, when I complained about it, they had more dogs. I think they stirred people up to have more dogs. I've had people wait on my front porch, thinking they have an application for a job to the dog kennel, because there's no signs, no nothing over there. There's nothing. They don't advertise, they don't do nothing but on the internet, Facebook. I've had people come up to me, where are they at? What do they do? Had people that, eh, these people, earrings in their ears, tattoos all over them. It's nasty people that want a job at the kennel, come to my house, not to theirs. One lane road, Ard Road and Farmer's Lane is one lane. That's why it's called Farmer's Lane, because it's one lane road. The traffic is horrible, horrible. They live off of Farmer's Lane, past my brother-in-law and I on right there. Traffic, ain't no telling how many accidents we have avoided, because they do not stop. They will not stop. They up and down that road, all night long, they up and down that road. And what they do at a dog kennel all night long, I have no clue. But anyway, they up and down all night long. The speed limit's 15 mile an hour. I just stopped a woman this past weekend that flew by there, and she stopped maybe 100 yards down the road sliding, because she missed a turn. I got grandkids there. We own a little, um, farmer's market, and I farm down there. My grandkids and my kids is on that road. I have asked them not to do that on the road. It don't matter, it don't matter. Uh, I've called the county, and I want to give thanks to Mr. Raymer. Thank you, Mr. Raymer. Mr. Raymer is the only one in this county in the last 20 years that's got us this far right here. That dog kennel has been there because the county let them do that. They a commercial business. They have 30 to 40 maybe employees over there. They have their own vets over there. People fly in in helicopters to get dogs. Now, if she's got that much money and that much power to do that, she needs to take it out of the community. My recommendation is to make them leave completely, because it is horrible. I work construction every day. I come in, I want to sit and relax. You know how long it's been since we had coffee on our front porch? 20 years. That's what you hear a while ago? That's what I hear every day, every night. People coming out, the people that got workings, got boom boxes, just boom, 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 boom. They, I mean, it's terrible. It is awful. Please do not let this, do not let this go, and do not let them have this, because I'm just telling you, for 20 years, it's been horrible. It has been bad.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Don Hopper, would you like to come on up?
How are y'all? This is off my front porch. We are farmers. I retired as a teacher. I grow produce, and sitting, um, on an afternoon after you've worked all day and you're tired, you just want to come and sit on your front porch and enjoy an afternoon of relaxation. You talk about green space on these residential areas that's coming all around us and changing Baldwin County? Noise is a problem. They moved in on us. I've lived on that farm all my life, born in 1964. We farm the area around it, and if you're not careful, planning and zoning board, there's not going to be any of food in Baldwin County, because you got houses growing. So there's a lot of responsibility that comes through this office. I probably sat in Planning and Zoning Office on top of Regions Bank several times before all the planning and zoning got as organized, I guess, as you are now. But they said, hey, you have to report to us, because we got one person trying to do this in Baldwin County. And so I'd take pictures, and I'd send, and I'd write letters. They tried to make our road a two-lane road in order to accommodate what they call the farm. And that's the sign, Smiralia Farm. We farm. We have cattle, we have row crops, we have timber. You eat food, I don't eat dog. You wear clothes made from cotton and linen, I don't wear dog. We have housing, you don't build a house with a dog. There's a lot of people who worship dogs today, but I'm not one of them. I like an animal, I've got a great dog. We sit by a fire, and the other, probably about a year ago, I just texted Meredith, the director, and I said, since y'all doing so much research on your dogs and making such a good living, can you DNA them not to bark? I mean, how simple would that be? Just have a quiet dog that sits like my dog Shug, looks at you, and you pet her and you love on her. I'm not opposed to a dog, but when you have 600, and then they move some of them to another location that's going to mess up somebody else's neighborhood, that's not solving the problem. The problem is, we're on the beginning of Cowpen Creek. There's runoff from kennels. Where's your fencing to keep that off of another person's property? It interferes with my brother's farming, that grows soybeans and corn, cattle feed for people to eat, for animals to eat, so that we have a food supply.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Melanie Weeks, uh, Wilks, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'm Melanie Wilks. I live at 26641 Rolling Ridge Drive, which is just south of them. I'm their next-door neighbor. Um, not according to them, apparently her daddy's 20-foot line that goes between our house and her house is now my neighbor, which he planted a privy bush on that about 20 years ago. Y'all know what a privy bush is? And aren't those delightful? And it has popcorn trees growing up in it, which I asked him when he said, could I plant shrubs here? Would it be okay if I put shrubs along our property line? I said, yeah, but don't plant privy. Oh, no, no, I'm not gonna do that. I have popcorn trees that are like oaks. I hate a popcorn tree. I don't know about y'all, but I hate them. That's what I have next door to me, and I wish I had a recording of my four o'clock friend that comes twice a week at least, and it's the trash truck, the industrial trash truck, that comes and picks up two dumpsters. And do you know what they do when they put them over the truck? Kaboom, kaboom, kaboom. Kaboom, 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 kaboom. That's what you hear at four o'clock in the morning. That's what we get to listen to at four o'clock in the morning. It's a delight to wake up to. I moved out there in 70... I mean, I moved out there in 98, and Sheri personally called me and said, "Hey, our friends are moving to Birmingham. Would you like to live out in the country? Bring your kids out here, and we're gonna raise all of our kids together," 'cause we went to church together for years. And I said, "I would love to." She said, "It is so quiet out here. It's so nice. This community is wonderful, and you would love it." So I moved out there. The difference in what I did and what they did is, I got in with the community. I went to church out there, I joined the people out there, I became friends with my neighbors, I became friends with the Hoppers. You know, no better people than your community. And I connected with them. They did not. They stayed in Spanish Fort, they did their stuff in Spanish Fort, but yet they built this business that if you go 10-mile radius and you say something about, "You live behind Bury Ellison," they say, "With all them dogs?" I'm like, "Yeah." "Well, where do you live with all them dogs?" I'm like, "Next door." "My God, do you ever sleep?" I'm like, "No, my bedroom backs up to the kennels." My bedroom. I now sleep in the middle bedroom in my house, 'cause all my children are gone, and I can get better acoustics there with my fan. Y'all, 20 years. And she did it slow, like cooking a frog. You put a frog in cold water, and you just slowly heat him up. That's what she did. She started with about three or four dogs, and she just bred them, sold them to friends, and then all of a sudden, she was like, "I can get $5,000 for one of these Goldens." Well, then a poodle got a hold of one. So then it became a Golden Doodle. And then it became $10,000, and $15,000 for a dog. Y'all, this is ridiculous, and it's 20 years of ridiculousness.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for listening.
All right. Brady Ellison?
I'm Wesley Altho, if you don't need to speak.
Okay. That's all I had signed up to speak. I don't... Come on... I don't have you signed up, but come on up.
I was supposed to call you to sign up.
Okay. Well, you come right on up. Give us your name.
My name is Deborah Jones. I live at 21251 Farmer's Lane, directly beside Bury. I'm gonna go right with them. Every day, I'm hearing them. I can tell you, I think they have two or three different shifts, because every time somebody's getting off, I'm hearing the boom, boom, boom going down. And it wakes you up. And my husband is a nurse, and it does not go very well for me when the boom, boom, boom's going on. Along with all the problems with the noise of the things, the garbage cans, and I can't let my grandson go on the road to even get our mail, because they're flying down the road. They've almost hit him one time, and I almost threw something at him. I should not have that problem in an agricultural area, to have to worry about my grandbaby. So that's what I'd like to say.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Chris, Michelle, either one of you want to speak now? Address anything that you heard?
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. If you've got any questions about the site plan or any of the other provisions of the site plan, I'll be happy to answer them. As far as operations and things, I'll have to defer to the applicant.
Okay. I'll ask first. Anybody have any questions for Chris? He's the engineer for the development.
I don't know if this is Chris or the staff, but is it under the recommendation, or do we already have this, the copy of the Kennel Management and Operations Plan?
Here's the copy, and this will be kept on file.
Do you have it?
Yes, it's...
Yes, it's on the screen.
That's it? So, there was a kennel case earlier, and there was a huge... There was pages of it, and there was like a noise mitigation plan, and the hours that the dogs would be outside where the neighbors could hear, and it was between 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. And then after that, there was no noise. There's none of that.
This is what was received.
Uh, okay.
I'm gonna have to defer to the...
To the owner?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Cory, am I understanding this correctly, that we're only getting this because someone went out there and looked and realized there had been improvements that triggered the CSP? Is that...
Well, due to the complaints and the code enforcement going out, they're just trying to come into compliance.
Right.
So this is...
So...
And what I said in the background with it being those, I think it was 18.9.2C and E, that's what triggered Commission's site plan approval.
Right.
And they've been trying to come into compliance, so...
Right. So what we have, referring to the last kennel one we had, what we have is, we're gonna beg for forgiveness instead of ask for permission, because we've been there so long. Because as far as I'm concerned, just listening from the people on the phone, to not call this a nuisance is, you know, disrespects the definition of nuisance.
So, yeah, you're correct. This is a case, and this is a bit more complicated than the other one we discussed, but what we have here is, there was a legal non-conforming use, because the dog kennel was in place prior to zoning. But Article 20, which deals with non-conformities, says that you can't intensify or expand that legal non-conforming use without coming into compliance with the zoning ordinance. Over the years, what's happened is that it's expanded without being kind of realized through the permitting process. And during code enforcement activities from complaints, it was discovered that there was some intensification of the project. So, the remedy, the first step of the remedy of that is to try to get them into compliance. That's why we're here today, to say, you know, "Let's go through the actual CSP." And there's other steps beyond that, once y'all decide what you want to do. But it's a little bit more complicated than the fact that the use, as it was in 2006, and the intensity of that use then, was a legal non-conforming. But anything beyond that is where they're in violation.
Sir, I didn't sign up. Could I speak just a minute, please?
Uh, are you a...
I'm a landowner of Smeralia Farms.
Sure, come on. Three minutes.
My name is Bury Ellison. I live at 21203 Farmer's Lane. Earlier today, y'all addressed a place where a lady is attempting to build a barn or something like this with a kennel. And right now, a barn's being proposed, and y'all can okay a barn for whatever you'd like for it to be, even though maybe down the road it might become a kennel or something that is such in nature. That's sort of what happened today. Because a long time ago, several years ago, as Melanie stated, there was people come from Fairhope, Spanish Fort maybe, and there was six people that bought property in this place right here. Well, their intentions was just to live in this place, to live out in the neighborhood. Then they start expanding, and something that's gonna get out of y'all's control right there is starting to say, "Where do we draw the line? Ask the noise? Our traffic? This is just a one-lane road going into this place right here." And we don't know how many people work up there at time to time, and Judges Smeralia, they can be very good neighbors. All the people around us are good neighbors. Our complaint is nothing but noise. We would like for this to cease and to stop. It's not nothing to do with shaking hands or talking to somebody. It's just a peace to have something wherever you're at. Whenever y'all go into your homes, I bet you like to turn the TV on and hear something and don't hear nothing of what's actually being said. That's all we want, is something to be quiet around us right there. If there's some way to stop this, that's what we'd like to do. But we would just like for y'all to consider something that would cut the noise level down, or at least cease the noise level happening around us, because this is gonna happen to another person. And every time we've talked about here tonight is Baldwin County getting busted up, and traffic is a menace, and we all know that. And how do we deal with that? I do not know. Y'all got a tough question to have to address. People from everywhere is moving in here, and the quality of life sometimes is being degraded. How do we stop some of this? I don't know. But we would just like for you to very much just consider what's being done to us and our community. Nothing to do with Judges Sheri, it's just the surroundings that has been put upon us. We would like for that to stop. Thank you for hearing me.
Is it okay if I address them?
Sure.
Not just you guys? Okay. So guys, I'm here...
Wait a minute. You need to address us.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. My name is Michelle McCarty. I'm a representative of Smeralias. Everything that's been said here to date, and by the people that came, were fully expected. I will say, from a historical... Do I have a time limit? A three-limit?
Three minutes, roughly.
Okay.
But you're the applicant, I'm gonna give you whatever time on that.
Okay. So, I have been working with Sheri since August of 2011. So, I've seen quite a bit of growth, expansion, that type of thing. As far as the building, because I've learned quite a lot here today, as far as the building side of thing that's been addressed. It's been probably 2005 or 2016 since any major buildings has happened on the property. Just to give some historical value and relevance on what's happened with her, is, like Melanie had said, when she originally started it, she actually had it in a small room on the side of her garage. So she never intended or expected that the business would become what it is. She just had children at home. She wanted to do something where she could stay at home with her children, make a little bit of money, preferably send them to Christian schools to be able to fund the Christian school, that type of thing. So Melanie is correct. She was only doing, you know, a handful of dogs or less when she first moved in there. That was her only intent. She had no other intent but to help provide for her family, and hopefully be able to cover, instead of having to pull from Judges' income, to be able to cover the cost of Christian school and that type of thing. So, and I believe it was in 2006. At that point, she had four small children, or I'm sorry, five children, one of which was still an infant. And somehow, Good Morning America got a hold of knowing that she was breeding dogs. My guess is, just because of other experiences I have, because our state is the first state in the alphabetical order, they were looking for a dog breeder on Valentine's Day to bring to the show, just to show that it was just one of those things that you could give to your loved one, that type of thing. So she went to that. Again, she was only doing a handful of dogs or less. Through that, again, she had no intention or aspiration that it was gonna be any more than going there for the day, and they paying for everything, they flying her up there, they putting her up in hotels, just the glamour of the opportunity is all that was presented to her. Through that, once she got home, and that aired, very, very, very quickly, things changed, as you can imagine. So the exposure of what she had originally have was just going to be her and her family in helping to provide for her children, quickly changed. So the next thing you know, she's having more and more people across the country that are trying to get a dog, because they've become interested in the breed, because this was a new breed. Before you had the Golden Doodle, I'm sorry, you had the Poodle, you had the Schnauzer, you had these individual things. But everybody here knows, the doodle industry has exploded on all types of doodles. So you don't just have Golden Doodle, you have Aussie Doodles, you have, you know, I don't even know how many others. So because she was on the cutting edge of the new type of breed, that just brought even more interest with the general public. So after she did that interview, she started getting a major, major amount of interest in her dogs. So she actually had a lady that she connected with out of, I think she was out of Mississippi, that she talked to her. She said, "Look, I'm down here breeding these dogs, and I'm doing all by myself. I got all these phone calls, I can't handle these phone calls. Would you mind moving here and helping me?" And that's what happened. So it was just the two of them. One was handling phone calls, one was handling the dog breeding, which was Sheri. Still able to handle it in her small...
Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Can I stop you for a moment?
Sure.
Other than the history, it's not that I don't appreciate that. I think we need to address more the issue of what we were dealing with is with the noise. And I think we would rather hear more about what's gonna be done to address what we've been hearing tonight, and instead of the history of how you got there.
Sure.
I...
And we've been very open and willing to do anything that Planning and Zoning asks.
Okay. Where is she?
Where is Sheri?
Yeah.
She just came from a vacation, and she's not here. I'm apologizing.
I'm a business owner. If people were complaining about my business, I would be there taking care of it.
Well, she felt like with it being approved, that it might not be necessary.
Yeah, it really hasn't been approved.
So I apologize for that, if that's... I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying. But I mean, everything that you guys have presented, everything that she has presented, that Cory has presented, said that we were approved, so never been to one of these before. She didn't know what was going to become of it. So again, the thing that is the noise ordinance, we've been willing, and we have actually done a lot of things since then. We've put mesh on things, we've... The kennels that we have are facing a different direction now. We've put shrubbery, we've put in the pond, we put a fountain to help try to distract the noise from Mr. Hopper that he says he's getting. We've also changed our plan as far as how we're feeding the dogs. They're fed in the morning at around 7:00 o'clock. We usually try to have any outside activity done by 2:00, just to allow. And me personally, I usually don't get in till probably about 9:30 or 10:00. I'm there all day long till 4:00. And I understand what they're saying, but I'm saying, I'm less than 100 feet away from the outside kennel dogs, and I just don't have the problems that they say that they're having. I hear what they're saying, but I'm just saying, I'm on site five days a week, and I just don't hear that. Now, I'm not saying they're lying by any means. I'm just saying that I believe the presentation is a little excessive than what's actually occurring. But I'm talking about that, again, from my experience. I've been there at night, I've been there at different times over the years, and it's just not any different than a normal farm is when you have cows, or donkeys, or, you know, other cattle-type things. I just don't feel like the noise is as excessive as that.
Let me ask you a question. I'm reading this from Chris, and its last line says, "The dog kennels have mesh coverings and fencing around the perimeter to ensure the dogs remain in their enclosure."
Yes.
So you're telling me that the covering is mesh?
On...
It's not a solid roof? It's a mesh roof?
No, 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 no. The roofs, the roofs are solid. We're talking about on the walls of, like, the outdoor kennels. We have a solid roof, and then we have mesh on the fencing, you know, like, fits on the fencing to... Instead of, you can see through the fencing, you have a mesh covering, if you may.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
So are the dogs enclosed at night?
Yes. They're always enclosed. The dogs are never let out. So the dogs are always... Well, let me preface that.
And how many dogs are we talking about?
On the average, we have probably about 165-ish.
Dogs?
But, yes, sir. But they're not outside, because the majority of our dogs, only about maybe 60 of those are housed outside. The rest of them are birthing, so they have puppies, they live indoors, some of the, a couple of the buildings that you guys have seen. So the only amount of dogs that are outside are about 60 dogs that are housed outside. That's it.
Sixty dogs housed outside?
Yes, sir.
Are they housed outside, or they're housed inside? I thought you said they were out...
Both. So the 60 dogs I'm referring to are... So the sixty dogs I'm referring to are of that hundred and sixty-five-ish, those are the ones that live outside. But what happens is as they're bred, when they, when they breed and they are ready to birth, that they are brought inside and they stay there the entire time, about two weeks before their birth, um, up until their puppies are weaned. And so the majority of them, they stay there. And so we have a constant rotation because of the breeding process, the one, they come in and they go out. So it's, it's a constant rotation. But we only have about sixty dogs that are outside on the constant and they live there. But those are the ones that I was mentioning, that they're fed and we try to make sure that by two o'clock, any outside activities are done to help with the noise. Because the heart of us is not to make our, our, our neighbors angry.
Right.
We've done and we've spent money and we're willing to spend more money, if need be, in any type of noise barrier that anybody feels is required or needed to try to do, to try to fix any problems that we're having. We're not trying to, you know, sideswipe the issue. We want to make our, our neighbors happy. We're just trying to figure out how to do it.
Okay. Anything else? Vince, I wanna ask, I know you're the code enforcement officer. Can, can you tell us that you actually witnessed the noise issue that, I mean, when you went out, obviously, to investigate, was it a noise issue from what you would expect from a hundred and sixty-five dogs?
What you expect from a hundred and sixty-five dogs? Yes, sir. Uh, Ms. Chairman, I, we were out there looking and the, the dogs were acting up during inspection. Uh, now, what happens, you know, beyond that, when I leave, I don't know.
Right.
I, I certainly understand Mr. Harper's view. I think, um, some of the issues that, well, understood from the complaints are that there's other dogs that come up to the side. There's cows out in the field that are making the dogs bark. So I'm hearing all kinds of things, but just personally, all I do is witness the dogs that are barking when I'm there.
Now, were they barking prior to your arrival or only when you went close to the dogs?
When I was, only when I was there. Yes, sir.
So when you were not close to the dogs, when you drove on the property, were the dogs barking?
No, dogs were not barking.
Thank you. And that's what I'm saying. I'm saying that obviously, a stranger, any of us here have a dog. If my dog, she's about four pounds, anybody comes to the door she doesn't know, she'll go crazy for about fifteen minutes until she knows who's there. Obviously, if a stranger comes on your property or comes near your dogs, they don't know them. They are animals, they're gonna do what animals do. But outside of that, he has witnessed that driving up to the property, he did not hear any dogs.
So you've, you've got all these people driving in and out, so they're, they're not barking at those people?
No, sir. We have no clients that come... Now, I will say, when she first started, she did have clients, but she does not have any clients that come up on the property. The only ones that come on the property are the people that work there and the dogs know them. So there is no outside people, there are no outside clients that come to that property.
All right. Mr. Bolton?
You said she could have three minutes, but you go a little longer. I think ten or fifteen minutes is enough.
Well, I, I'm fine.
I mean, I, I'm ready to go home.
At the same time, when people are asking questions, I have to honor that too, so... Does anybody else have any other questions?
One, one question. Does the owner live on site?
Yeah, she does. She is. She does. And, and, and part of what I was saying earlier is the, the growth was so unexpected. Um, all she has been doing with, with the buildings and such is trying to make sure that the dogs are cared for in a humane, safe environment. Um, we've had probably since I've been there, five or six times, the department, the, uh... What, what's the ones that come out when cruelty to animals?
I don't know. Let's, 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 let's hold the conversation. I, I need, we need to wrap this up and I think we're getting way beyond where we're trying to get to here. Chris, you got something else to add?
I was just, I was just saying, it, it seems that there's, there's some, the issues with the noise. And, and so obviously, we might need to take some time to develop a noise abatement plan and, and figure out a way to, uh, maybe come back again later with a solid plan of what we may could do to abate the noise, 'cause that seems to be the issue.
Yeah, I think so too.
And we're in agreement with that. We have no problem with that. We want to make our, the neighbors happy.
So if, 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 if it...
All right. All right. Thank you. I'm gonna close the public hearing. I think we've heard enough conversation on it. I think that, uh, we've heard enough to make a decision on one way or the other, so... Anybody have any other questions for staff? I'm gonna leave it at that. We're gonna close with staff. So if you got a question for staff, ask it now. Otherwise, the next question's gonna be a motion.
Ms. Chairman, I would say just, you know, uh, the applicant was, uh, suggesting to table it until we could work out a noise abatement, uh, program. And if that's what the commission chooses, uh, the, the commission site plan, uh, uh, section of the zoning ordinance does allow the commission to look at special conditions like we're dealing with here, make special recommendations. But I would say that we need to be very careful to be really clear and specific if we go down that path, make sure it's something that can be measured and enforced, uh, if, if we do that. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. Erin, you have anything? I don't wanna exclude you here, but I'm not trying to drag you into it either. But at the same time, you got anything that you wanna recommend or not?
I mean, my question was, can you vote on this today and come back also about the noise? Like, is this kinda like, I'm thinking of Little Point Clear and things like that where, and I'm thinking of the...
Thought that exactly.
The Bellicera and, and the issues that we had there. Um, so, you know, from a procedural standpoint, can we piecemeal this or does it have to be tabled and then addressed and then come back with all the additional conditions that there are?
I, I believe it needs to be tabled if we wanna add conditions, 'cause the, the way the section reads is that in approving a site plan, the planning commission may impose conditions and restrictions upon the property benefited by the site plan approval as may be necessary to comply with the standards set out above. So the standards that were presented during the presentation is what it was referring to. So if you're gonna put conditions on it, it has to be tied to the site plan approval and not a secondary approval.
Okay. Any other questions?
Not a question. Not a question, but...
I'll close the public hearing, I can't.
Not a question, but for, um, for staff or for Corey, can we extend or expand upon number two? That it's not just gonna be whatever the letter was earlier. That has to be a fully realized plan and specifically to address noise mitigation, but something similar to what we saw earlier with the other kennel. Um, it's not a, a letter with one paragraph. And I think what Chris was alluding to earlier is something that addresses a hundred and sixty-five dogs, not three puppies.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion, we deny the site plan.
Uh, wait a minute. Well, I gotta deal with the motion first. She did make a motion. All right. Ms. Burnett's made the motion to deny the request. Let's get a second on it first.
I'll second it.
And Mr. Bolton is seconding the motion. Okay, so what does this mean if it's denied?
They go back to 2006.
There's... They have, again, they, they have a legal nonconformity of what existed on the site in 2006. There's ways that that can be enforced. It's, it, it's not something that happens overnight. It takes time and, and will be quite a process to do that. So if it's denied, it doesn't necessarily take away the kennel use altogether. It just says you have to go back to your legal nonconforming use. Um, so, so it does get, it does make it kinda complicated, uh, in going through that process, but there, there is a path forward on that route. Um, if it's, uh, tabled and we work through other, in special conditions to deal with noise and traffic and the things we're hearing, then there's a, obviously, a path forward to get them in, better into compliance and compatible with the neighborhood, if, if there's a way of doing that.
Right.
Yeah, so, so that's kinda the two paths forward that the, the commission has. Um, obviously, you know, if it's denied, there's always the appeal process that the applicant can do and that's, that's what, everything we do. So that, you know, they, they have that, that option to go forward as well.
And can I...
Go ahead.
So I just wanna, um, go back and I wanna remind everyone of kinda how the Bellicera thing went. You know, we, we do not have a county noise ordinance. So during the process of working with Bellicera, they were coming up with an idea that they would keep the noise down to a certain decibel and do these measurements and things like that in order to get their conditional site plan approval and to not have it revoked. We were trying to revoke it a, at that point. And because of, and I think they ended up getting revoked, but we could not have told them just to go and you can't do past twenty-eight decibels or thirty decibels or whatever. They did that on their own in order to try to be in compliance with us and to get, to be able to operate, you know, the way that they were. So they put all these conditions on it, that they said that the conditions could go in with our conditions. And so we can't come back, you know, you can deny or you can table it and work with them to see if there's some conditions that can come that can make it suitable, but we as a body can't say, you know, you can't, we can't regulate the noise without assistance, I would say.
All right, then I, I have to ask this question. If we were... If we were to approve it and then there was a complaint regarding the noise being a nuisance, does that streamline or somehow bring it back, you know, bring it back to us, you know? I hate, streamline is not the right word. Does it bring it back to us in a way that, you know, in a Bellicera kinda situation? Where, where it's becoming...
That's what I was referring to earlier. If we go down the path of having some special conditions that, that are offered by the applicant to, to, uh, address the noise, we would need to be very clear of how that's measured and accounted for. Because when it, if there's not a, a very specific way that we can, you know, enforce that, it makes it complicated to come back to you guys.
So basically, either approve it or deny it. We're in a complicated situation because these, these neighbors are going to come back and they're going to tell us that the noise hasn't changed, you know? And, and, I mean, the only way it's gonna change is a completely enclosed building that's spray-fumed.
Right. We would have to be very specific about what the noise level is and how it's measured and, and things like that and where it's measured from.
And, and I don't know if having a more comprehensive kennel management plan in pay, in place about things, you know, if you table it, that might be one of the, the reasons, you know, and the, the reasons to table it. Um, I'm just saying we don't have a noise ordinance. So we're... If you, if you approved all of this, and, and Jay, you correct me if I'm wrong. If you approved all of this and they became a hundred percent in compliance with all these conditions and everything and then everybody comes back and is complaining about the noise, I don't know what we can do about it.
Well, I mean, the, as, as on the screen right now, uh, the section, the, the planning commission can revoke by approval, uh, the, the plan, anytime it becomes unsuitable or incompatible with its location as a result of the nuisance generated by the use. The devil is in the details with that is what, how do you define or prove that it's becoming a, a nuisance that's breaking the conditions of the commission's site plan? So that's why I say, if we're, if we're gonna go down the route of putting some special conditions on there, we need to take some, some time to really think through that very clearly to make sure it's something that can be properly enforced through our regulation.
If we deny it, we're only, we're only saying we're pushing it back to pre-2006 conditions, right?
That's correct. They still, they have the right to go to their...
They still have a dog kennel, 'cause they had it prior to 2006. We'll never take that away.
The dog kennel use is allowed as, in, in the intensity of its use in 2006 when the zoning district was, was created.
So, I wanna be sure everybody understands that if we deny this, it's not getting rid of the kennel. It's, it's only cutting it back to some, which is gonna be hard on you guys figuring out, I guess, going back to areas of what buildings intensity existed after 2006, but...
It just seems to me the use is so intense on that. I mean, with the industrial garbage trucks, you know? And, and it just seems like the use is not conducive to an R, I mean, a rural area.
So the, but the deal is, you're not gonna get rid of the use. You can get it, it's gonna...
But we don't know how many dogs. I mean, sixty dogs outside?
I don't know, I don't want you to think I'm arguing with you. I'm agreeing.
No, I know.
I just want you to understand it's gonna go back.
So the intensity wouldn't be...
How many dogs were there?
We couldn't look at the dog, we would have to look at the intensity of the use of the site, which would be the building coverage and parking coverage and things like that. So it would be, they would be able to just hypothetically say they had five thousand square feet of buildings in, in 2006. Well, they would have to take the site back to be in the compliance in the same footprint they were operating in in 2006. Um, that would be, i-if it's denied, they would still have the right to do that. Not saying they would do that. They could, they could just move it somewhere else, but that, but, but through our regulations, they could take it back to what, that the intensity of that use was. The, the number of dogs, we, we, we don't, we couldn't, we couldn't use that as a determining factor. It would be the intensity of the, the building and site usage, not... 'Cause there's no way we could ever try to prove how many dogs they had on site in 2006. So that's just not, that's not what, that's not the intensity use I'm, I'm talking about.
So anyway, my point was, we can either deny it, send it back to what it was, 2006, it's still gonna exist, or we table it and try to control through some conditions that we can manage from here. Because if we go back to 2006, I don't know that it's much managing. We're gonna, just gonna be sending it back to what the conditions were then. But anyway, I, let's do this. The motion's on the floor, first off. So anybody got any questions on, on that? Because we're gonna have to take action on that motion first.
Yeah.
So if we're ready...
Well, I'm conflicted on which route to go at this point, because of all the discussion. You know, it sounds like the applicant wants to make it right, but we don't know that that would really happen and we can't really enforce that with the noise issues.
So tableing it doesn't mean next month or when they come back, if they're not agreeing to move forward and work on it, that we, it can't be denied in the future. It just means...
That's correct.
We're giving them a chance to come up with the plan.
That's correct.
And follow through with that.
I can withdraw my motion.
Yeah, that's, you can either leave it on the floor or we can actually take action on it and you may find that there are those that agree with you or, or if it gets turned down, then we can follow it with another motion. So, yes, sir?
If we agree and, and deny it and take it back to 2006 and give them opportunity to get it up to snuff, the way it's supposed to be, to get the sound down and come back and come, and ask for, to, for more, to put it back up. I mean, if we just assumed that they're gonna do what we want them to do and they hadn't done it yet, so that's what I... So 2006, get them to conform to that. And then if they wanna add stuff to it, they gotta put buildings with soundproofing or whatever and then everything would be all right. Just want them to do what's right.
Mm-huh.
So I guess the, what we're saying is, is if, if that's the direction, it is try to, you know, try, try to get them into compliance. That's what we're saying. If we table it and let them spend more time getting a better management plan and a way of, of dealing with noise and see if there's a way to address these comments, you know, that, that we can enforce it, then we could get that same resolution.
How, how would that make the people that live on the road happy if it takes them four years to do it?
No, they wouldn't have indefinite time to do it. I, it, what I'm saying is it would, you know, we would, they, they, right now, still have a, a code... would, you know, we would, they, they, right now, still have a, a code violation on the site, because it's, it's been intensified without a permit. So, they have, you know, they would, they would have to do this in, in fairly short order, in the next few months to, to get this plan resolved and back to you, and back to another public hearing to present what the proposed solution to these problems are.
Well, I'm, I'm, like, I can withdraw my second, if we can get it like a six-month time limit on it, and y'all can come back.
Yeah, you can, through the tabling process, you can say it's tabled to a certain date.
Yeah.
So, you can, you can set the timeframe that it's, that it's tabled to come back.
I can, I withdraw my motion. Chairman?
Okay. All right. So, I'll entertain another motion.
Yes. Let's table it or till the next meeting for them to come back with a better plan and a more comprehensive, uh, design of a building and, uh, a management plan.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Mr. Fletcher's made a motion to table this until the next meeting. Have a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Burnett is seconding the motion. Anybody have any questions on the motion?
I have a question. I don't know if that's enough time to get a full realized plan and a, grasp on what's happening and how to resolve the, the problem, to do the noise mitigation.
Can y'all do that by next meeting?
Um, you have to, forgive me, I don't quite understand exactly the, the concept of what you're asking for. If, if Chris feels like we can get that done in that amount of time, I'm hesitant to judge that if he's on duty before. So, we're, again, we're trying to make our neighbors happy, so we'll do whatever is that possible.
Chris, is it, you know, Chris, you know what we're asking for. You've been down this road, I'm sure, with our meetings, but-
Uh, yes, sir. Um, in, in ideal world, it would be next meeting, uh, just in case Chris, excuse me, for sure. We would probably do it on a very bad-
All right. You want to leave it till the next meeting? That was your motion?
Well, I don't, I don't have a problem with giving them extra time if it's going to be right, if it's going to solve the problem. So, that's what I'm trying to get to.
And, may I say something? I guess Chris would have to do something, or, or they would have to do something, and then give it to the department.
Right.
And, the department needs time to do their work that they already have in the line and that. So, I mean, it's whatever y'all want, but I do feel like the next meeting may actually harm the department, too, that has to review everything-
Right. We lost a week here because-
That they're trying to look at, or trying to suggest.
Because we have to send-
What's the deadline for Smithers for next meeting?
Hmm. It'll be in a week.
Bobby, what's the next deadline? Twenty, my first?
The second, the third.
Right. The biggest problem is if we get something, we can't get it in your agendas in time, because 30 days is after we've already created the next agenda. So, it's, it's tough for us to get you the information before the meeting, if we don't have two months.
Yeah, you don't want to push it back till a couple of months.
October.
So, if the August 1st is the deadline for October?
So, we shoot for October now?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
Is that good, Ms. Burnett, with you, on the second?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Mulick?
No.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Ms. Stradiger?
Yes.
Mr. McKenzie?
No.
Ms. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Mr. Bolton?
No.
Mr. Waters?
Yes.
Mr. Key?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. So, the motion carries. It's, uh, tabled until October meeting, then.
Mm-huh.
All right. That was the end of our agenda. Uh, I have no new business. No one signed up for public comments. Staff reports. Mr. Dixon?
Um, nothing, um, nothing specific. You know, we're, just a kind of a reminder that we are still working through our subdivision amendment recommendations that we'll be bringing to you guys, probably in, um, September or October. Uh, we'll be scheduling some, some time to discuss that with you and everything. But, we're, we are going to do a, a, a presentation at the Riden Bridge Committee to the commission about, um, you know, kind of, kind of our goals and what we're trying to accomplish, uh, next week.
Okay. Legal counsel?
Nothing.
Aaron, we, you brought it up, but the Bellicera, nothing, we have heard nothing on that?
I've not gotten an update in a while on that. So, um, and just-
I figured if you had, you probably would have shared it, but, uh-
Yeah. And, since that's handled by outside counsel, um, and not by law firm, um, they don't, we don't always know exactly what's going on.
Okay.
I have a quick, I'm, I'm sorry. I know y'all want to leave, but I have one quick question. Well, was there a, a discussion or some thought process behind radically abbreviating our agendas? Because, there were, there were multiple, multiple pages that were in the staff reports that were not in the agenda that I got.
Um, the staff report, whether, there's a difference between the presentation on the screen and the staff report.
That's my point, yeah. Everything that was typically on the screen, I got in an agenda that I could look at and make notes on and all that. But, now, I'm, I was stuck this time with what is basically an abbreviated agenda with the rest of the documents electronically. And, and I, you know, I don't know how everybody else is, but, you know, I, I like to hold paper in my hand and write on it.
Right.
If we're moving to something that's going to be electronic, then I'll have to change-
No, it's not necessarily electronic. What we're trying to do is, um, is, is take the, the, the staff reports and make it a little, uh, easier for, for you all to, to go through it and, and kind of read through it and digest it, make notes on it, without having to go through a whole bunch of pictures and other things to, to get-
Well, this, this was not easier.
I'll, I'll have to look and see that, but, yeah, we'll, we'll look at that.
Thank you.
But, we, but just, just to be clear, we've been doing that for several months now, and it's, um, but it's, it's-
Uh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. If nothing else, we are adjourned until our August 1st meeting.